I'd like to bring to order the March 28th meeting of the Tiverton Town Council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Mello.
Counselor Souza.
Present.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Mello.
Present.
Counselor DiMedeira.
Present.
Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Lambert will be a little late.
Consent agenda. Approval of the regular council meeting minutes of March 14th, 2016. Approval of the executive session minutes, council meeting March 14th, 2016. Approval of the council's special meeting minutes of February 27th, 2016. Approval of the council's special meeting minutes of February 20th, 2016. Receipt of minutes for the following boards and commissions. The Board of Canvases, three. Harbor and Coastal Water Management Commission. Recycling Landfill Committee. Correspondence received and filed. Town of Naragansett Resolution on Support of Budget Article 15 relating to municipalities and governors FY 2017 budget. CRMC Public Notice for Proposed Rulemaking and Shoreline Change Maps by Repelletier, representative to discover new proposed legislation. Would anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Madam President, CA 2C, CA 3A.
CA 2C.
It's the Recycling Landfill Committee.
Okay, and go ahead. And CA 3A?
Yes.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor unanimous. CA 2C. Mr. Souza.
Myself and several members took a tour of the landfill with Mr. Verucci. We explored several ideas for the relocation of the recycle facility, which is coming up pretty soon. And it seemed to be that the best idea was to move it down to the bottom next to the gate. We checked with DEM on some other areas, and it's just not enough room up top. So we were satisfied. We did really good to try to keep it up there because we thought it'd be easier, but it is what it is. At least it'll, yeah, the landfill, so it would still be, people would just have to go to one area, you know, one, they'll be checking you at the gate. My only observation was that if we could do something maybe for security up there with a camera, because without having the attendant up there watching what's being dumped, if the guy in the dozer's out somewhere else, it could leave to, we don't know what could go in the brush pile or whatever. So he was checking that stuff. You can't see at the bottom of the truck bed, though, so it's, people tend to hide things, TVs, and it's pretty interesting. It's not funny at all. I just, I find it amusing. Either way, it's, I think that was, Mr. Verucci has it well on hand, and an administrator was on top of it, so we were satisfied.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve C.
Make a motion to approve. 2A, C, 3.
Second.
2C.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor unanimous. Councilman Souza, 3A, CA 3A, Town of Naragansett Resolution in Support of Budget Article 15 relating to municipalities and governors FY 2016 budget.
Well, just that, I hope that everybody had read through that, and I would garner my support to it if the council saw fit.
Any further discussion?
Do we need to, should we make?
We'll have to make up our own resolution.
Make up our own, send it up also. I think it's a great idea to switch it from three to five years old, so save us a little bit of money.
So I would need a motion to approve CA 3A.
I'll make a motion to approve CA 3A.
And also to write a supporting resolution, also from the town of Tiverton.
I'll make that in form of a motion.
Second.
Couldn't that be just one, Tony?
You could do a next. I was just asking you if that one.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I should.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Post. Don't want to post.
Excuse me, want to post. Public hearing. Demolition of unsafe buildings status update continued from March 14th. Dennis and Donna Silva, 1588 Bogomash Road, Lot 215, Lot 113.
This is a matter that has been continued on the agenda for each meeting because it's a public hearing. And I've been in discussions with the attorney for Union Mutual Fire Insurance Company, which is attempting to gain the legal rights to demolish the building under their insurance policy. My lawyer advises me, Fred Mason, advises me that they're down to just one document left. They expect to get it within the next week. They have already lined up the necessary contractors to get the job done. They have the funds available. I anticipate that this structure will be down in about three or four weeks, but I would ask that it be continued to your next meeting for public hearing purposes.
Do I have a motion?
Make that. A motion to continue this to the next meeting, which is the?
April 4.
April 4.
11.
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor unanimous. JLPH accusations, Company Incorporated, Longplex LCC, abandonment of Commerce Boulevard, AKA Communication Drive.
Madam President, I recommend that item G1 be combined with the public hearing because the subject matter is the same, and it will, I think, save a little bit of time if both of them are taken at the same time.
Do I have a motion to bring G1 up?
I'll make a motion to bring G1 up behind B2. Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor unanimous, I believe.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, I just can't see you.
Before the presentation, may I say something?
Sure.
The public hearing set down for tonight is on a petition to abandon the public way. By statute, if a road is to be abandoned by the town council, one binding is required, and that is that the roadway has ceased to become useful as a public way. So please keep that in mind as the presentation goes forward, that in order for the motion to be effective, that's the first thing that you have to do. Now, there's other matters to be addressed with this particular proposal, but I'm assuming that the first thing to be taken up is the road abandonment.
Mr. Long? Welcome.
Hi.
You can continue it or present what you'd like.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Chris Duhem. I'm a professional engineer with Dupree Engineering located at 90 Broadway in Newport. I'm with attorney Chris Offenberg with Silver.
Thomas.
Thomas Offenberg, thank you. And with the applicant, Jim Long. This is a project that the council has seen over several years. The project is the development of the Tiverton Industrial Park. Dupree Engineering was involved with the initial design plans worked out in 2012 with the past planner, Mr. Spencer, Chris Spencer. At the time, there was a consideration to develop the lots into what was the minimum zoning area of 40,000 square foot within the industrial zone. In order to access many of the upland areas of the industrial park, we had proposed cul-de-sacs to be constructed to get to those upland areas. The lots were shaped to that minimum size, and the roadways were designed and permitted through DEM for future consideration of new buyers that come in. With that, we had reserved some open space areas only because they were unbuildable areas. They had wetlands on them, they had ledge on them, they had buffers on them, but there was no requirement for open space, and I think we'll get to that later. Since 2012, when we had prepared the industrial park design and had it permitted, we also worked with the EDC, who was brought in by the manager at the time and the council, to look at marketing the industrial park and to have a more aggressive plan, if you will, to sell the lots. And they brought in Mr. Marcel Valloy from the EDC, and with him, Mr. Steve King, who runs the Quantic Development Corporation, the QDC. And they had looked at the proposed plan, the development plan, with the cul-de-sacs and the half-acre lots, and they felt strongly that an industrial park would be better served if it had large lots that had less cul-de-sacs or no cul-de-sacs even, and just utilized Progress Road. So Mr. Valloy had Dupree Engineering redesign the plat into 20 lots, eliminating all the cul-de-sacs, and to market that parcel, those parcels. And then that is ultimately what Mr. Long had seen as a development plan. Where the through cul-de-sac road would have been eliminated, and the large lots, five acres or greater, would have been proposed so that you could have larger uses of the site, you could economically develop the site, you wouldn't have to build as much roadway and pervious surfaces, so there'd be less impact on drainage, a better environmental aspect. So Mr. Long is really the product of the fruition of what the EDC had considered as a successful plan. So he entered into an initial agreement with the town council through Ms. Offenberg as his attorney, and he had proceeded to develop this. And with this site development, the road would need to be abandoned, and the lots that were previously subdivided would have to be all merged. So with that requirement, our firm has done engineering plans, and we had done an administrative subdivision plan, and we had gone in front of the planning board last month and asked for a recommendation, and the planning board had looked at the entire site in total and had agreed that the road could be abandoned within the lots that Mr. Long is buying, and the lots, as previously plotted, could all be merged so that we create a 15-acre parcel that Mr. Long needs for the recreation building that he would like to propose. The planning board did not recommend having the road abandoned further south of Mr. Long's plat that leads to Progress Way for the simple fact that there would be a landlocked parcel. One of the facts would be there'd be a landlocked parcel that the town would own. After that meeting, we attended a TRC meeting with the fire chief, public works director, the town manager, and the town's economic development officer. And we had looked at the requirement to, the fire's requirement to have an emergency access easement that runs through the site and also connects to Progress Road. And also, the fire chief wants to have a minimum of 20 feet. We're proposing 24 feet over the access aisles, and then have access around the building itself, which isn't part of the plating. But it was important from the fire chief's perspective at the TRC meeting that there'd be two points of access to the site, one from Industrial Way and one from Progress Road. So Mr. Long agreed to that requirement, and he had offered to have on a separate agreement of purchase and sales of a lot that fronts on Progress Road, Lot 804. Mr. Long would utilize this for outdoor recreation, not for construction, but for climbing of the ledge out props that exist. And he would agree to build the road, the 24-foot driveway and easement over the future abandoned right-of-way of the Communication Drive, and that we would replat the remaining lots of, that the town owns, Lot 811, so that it would have frontage on Progress Road and it wouldn't become an illegal lot. So this last plan that we have in front of us is to allow for abandonment of the full Communication Drive right-of-way. It would become a private driveway and access to the recreation center. It would be required that a 24-foot easement or greater, if the public works require shoulders, we could go to 34-foot wide access easement for emergency vehicles only that would run from Industrial Way to Progress Road. That private drive would be owned and maintained by Mr. Long. Wouldn't be any requirement of the town of Tiverton to repave it or plow it or have the utilities maintained within there. Be Mr. Long's requirement, and that Mr. Long would have another purchase and sales of the frontage lot on Progress Road in the area of the abandoned right-of-way of Commerce Communication Drive. So there is no further requirement, as Mr. DeSisto said, that there is no, you would have to decide that there's no requirement to have a public road through the site. We can represent that there'll be access for emergency vehicles, for fire, police, for public safety that runs through the site. Looking for my development plan. That would access the recreation center. That the intent of the industrial park subdivision, as presented by EDC, is better served by eliminating this roadway, the construction of that roadway, the maintenance and requirements that would be borne by the town would all be eliminated. That eliminating the right-of-way would facilitate the recreation building that Mr. Long had talked to in the very beginning of the project. This shows two separate buildings. We consolidated them into essentially one building. So there's no further requirement to have a public right-of-way. There is a requirement for a driveway, emergency access easement, and we're very much in favor of meeting the fire chief's requirements. So I'd ask that the council abandon the roadway, recognizing that there's no benefit to the town of Tiverton.
Would you like to add anything, Mr. Long?
I've pretty much summed it up.
Discussion from the council.
Has this building gotten larger from?
From day one?
From day one, it was two buildings.
Right, 60 and 60.
And then we heard it was one building.
The two buildings merged to one now.
Which was 105 square?
It was, the original plan he has right there was, each of them were 60,000 square feet. Right now, we're at 125.
Okay, so it grew from 105 to 125?
No, to 120.
No, no, because the first building was 105. I remember 105.
Yeah, the first one should have been 60.
It was 60, and then you combined it to one building.
Right, so it just doubled. It was 60 and 60, now the total is 120.
Well, I could have swore there was one in between there.
The, that plan right there is the original plan. That's a copy of exactly what I gave the town at the very first.
Yeah, I remember that one.
Yeah, so it was 60 and 60.
Yeah, I agree.
And then, you know, we sold it out quick. That's why we jumped up to doing it all at once.
Okay, so the increase in this building is causing the, is for the request of that road, correct? Because it's larger?
No. No.
Well, it looks like the building's going into that road.
It is now, but my original plan is that plan right there with the 60 and 60.
I understand that.
There was never a road there.
Correct.
But now that the road is there, because it's recorded, that's why it's a subject. Okay.
That was a driveway originally. That was a way to get into your development, but it wasn't a road.
Right.
The road was always there.
Right.
On paper, yes.
On paper, okay.
Only on paper.
Well, yeah, and it was only since the last change of the subdivision plan.
I think 2012.
Okay.
When Boss.
I remember that.
Marcel.
Yeah.
Yeah, make sure I say that right.
And I.
That plan was never recorded. That's the problem. That's why we have this problem. I was presented this new plan with the big lots, so we moved forward to do it like we agreed. And then when we went to do the closing, the lawyers found out that it was recorded, and you know, and I'm showing the scale, and we're putting a building on a road, so that we had to backtrack. So now, all of a sudden, the road is the main event of this whole project.
That's.
That never existed when we were originally doing this. So if we went back two years ago and the town continued doing what they were doing, we wouldn't be in this boat right now. No one even know that road existed. But because it never got done, this is where we are.
Oh, it doesn't matter.
But I'm willing to do the fire department, you know, to make the emergency and stuff like this. The problem I have is, is I don't, it can't be called a road.
No.
Because someone's gonna, kids are gonna be in the back, or whoever's gonna be in the back, and they're gonna cut down there real fast as a shortcut. I'm building a family entertainment with thousands of kids, and they're gonna be crossing the street because all my parking is on one side. The reason the building's pushed back so far from the road is because of the boundary lines, because of the wires. So it's a large building that's up front, but because of the wires, I have to move it back. So it's just trying to place the building on a very shallow lot with a lot of things in it that shouldn't be there. But I picked the lot, and I'm good with that. You know what I mean? I can pick that lot. It's perfect. I don't want it to change. I just want the road to go away.
Right.
Question? A question, please, for the solicitor or the administrator. Now, with the casino deal on that second road, that's for emergency only. Isn't that gonna be gated at the end with some sort of a?
But this is gonna be a driveway that's gonna have access to both sides.
Right. Well, wait a minute. Are we, that's what I'm confused. Are we requiring this as an emergency road like we did with the casino, where it has to be that separate exit, that second exit?
Well, I think that has to be fleshed out a little bit more. And my question is, is essentially, I'm sorry.
He was just talking about speeders. That's why I brought that up.
And it's a good question, but my question, this is what I think you need to say. You're asking that the road be abandoned, but it's going to be replaced with some type of a drive that will accommodate public safety vehicles, correct?
Correct.
Has that been shown on the master plan that was approved by the planning board?
The planning board had seen a.
Administrative subdivision plan that abandoned Communication Drive and showed a, we're showing now.
Chris, you gotta bring that closer. I can't see a thing from here.
But is that road just for emergency vehicles?
Well, anybody can use it.
No, it isn't just for.
Essentially, it's going to be a road, a 24-foot wide town road.
It's gonna be a way to get into the parking lot in the building. So it's actually gonna be a public access.
It'll be a public way, but a private driveway.
Yes.
Right.
I'm getting confused because I'm hearing it's gonna be a driveway, and now he's saying it's gonna be a road.
Well, it's gonna be a public way.
Kind of like the casino road, a big long road.
But it's not only for emergency vehicles. It's a way in and out of.
It's a 24-foot wide driveway.
24-foot wide driveway.
All right, now I'm understanding.
Two 12-foot lanes.
That anyone could use.
That anyone that wants to come here can use.
But he don't want speeders going up and down.
We don't want it to be a road, thinking you could take a right on Longplex Road, and that's a shortcut or a faster way that we have people going through.
Oh, we're gonna stop that.
Well.
It's gonna be angled, and then we'll have a large speed bump to slow it down where you won't. But they're not gonna know that until they're hitting it.
This is also an industrial park with one tenant that employs about a half a dozen people. It's not exactly a thoroughfare of traffic. So I'm not sure that's a huge.
And as long as you have like the entrance sign, entrance to Longplex or whatever.
Saying when an event gets over, that's when you have the flux of traffic.
They'll think it's just a place to go and park. They're not gonna think it's a road.
Right.
Can you define what it's going to be? It's not going to be an easement?
It's a drive.
It's just going to be shown on your master plan? Because I think that, the only reason I ask this is because there has to be a public safety component in this.
Yes. That's what this satisfies, the public safety component of having a through road, two points of access to the structure for fire, for police, for ambulatory.
But it's actually a driveway.
It's a driveway. It's owned only by the corporation, owned and maintained, two 12-foot travel lanes, 24 feet wide. There's not gonna be an emergency gate.
Are you gonna, I'll ask the question Tony did. Are you gonna grant an easement to the town?
Yes.
Okay.
That was never an issue from the beginning.
The chief wanted the easement.
Okay.
I would want it as well.
Yeah, and of course, it has to be drafted, but is that on the master plan that you got from the planning board?
It was not, because it wasn't considered at that point. We have to go through development plan review. There might be other requirements that satisfy public.
This is going back to the planning board?
Oh, it's going back to the planning board no matter what for TRC and everything else that's required by the town.
Okay.
So what you're asking of us today is just to abandon that road?
Yes.
Correct. All right. And I'll have some recommended language of this, but that also includes, and I was mistaken, I guess, the purchase and sales agreements for the lot at the bodily amendment?
Yes.
And not the land up above where was the open space?
We have an amendment to the original purchase and sales agreement because the original purchase and sale names these things by specific numbers.
Correct.
And once you abandon Commercial Drive, we want to create this and call it Parcel A, make that big parcel that was originally shown to him. The planning board's merging all of this together. We're calling it Parcel A. They'll give it a, by one number assessors. So there's an amendment to the PNS for that, and then a different purchase and sales agreement to buy 804. That's how I submitted it.
So, Chris, thank you. Basically, what the amendment to the purchase and sales agreement, which is G1 on the agenda, is the combined lot, but it also includes those open space areas.
Yes, there's a little bit of open space.
They'll show you the yellow and the green one.
Right, because the purchase and sale is specific to what was recorded, because this was not, what he was showing was not recorded, so it was a way that we came up with how we were gonna describe it.
Does anyone have a copy of the original purchase and sale that I can look at? Because I don't have one in my package.
I could, the purchase and sale, the funny bit.
There's an amended purchase and sale, and there's no red line or edits, so I don't know what's been changed.
Description of the lot numbers that was reviewed by?
That's fine. I need to read the original purchase and sale. The second, while we're chasing that down, do you, Chris, do you have a plan that shows the entire subdivision, the entire industrial park with these changes affected? Because you've got the maps. We don't have any maps, so we're kind of working off of your hymnal.
The area that we're talking about is, maybe it's smaller.
The answer to the question is no, then. You don't have a plan. What I'm looking for is I'd like to see what this looks like when we abandon the roadway, merge those three parcels, and merge the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 parcels north.
Counselor, this essentially, if you can see the pink area, merges the lots that were considered on the original purchase and sales agreement, it merges the road that's to be abandoned, and it also takes two pieces of the open space as areas for drainage and for access around the buildings. So essentially, the master plan. So essentially the master plan, and we can go to the planning board if this is more appropriate, but the master plan would merge these lots, would have a through driveway as, as originally intended. But now it'll be an easement.
I understood that. I didn't mean to be a stick in the mud, but if we're at the point where we're drawn on a plan with a highlighter and you're asking us to make fairly significant land use decisions on a particular parcel of land in a particular sensitive industrial park, master plan area, I mean, maybe we're not ready for this. I, I mean...
That's fair, but we did go to the planning board and the planning board has jurisdiction where they looked at an administrative subdivision. That's where existing lot lines are merged. We're not creating new lots. We're looking at the access. And the recommendation to abandon, um, is truly that recommendation only. It's, it's the council's decision.
I know, but what I'm, what I'm asking is, after, you're, you're asking us to do a certain number of things. Immediately abandon the roadway and then that, that triggers a certain course of action, which would be granting an easement to the town, combining those six lots. Also a second purchase and sale option on the southernmost lots that face Progress Road and administrative combination of, I think, three, is it three lots or two?
No, it's six. These lots?
The bottom.
No, the bottom. It's just this one with the abandoned part of the road.
Mr. Long was always looking to purchase this property. It's, it's a mountain of land.
The second, the option on the second parcel was one single parcel? That is about a quarter of the size of the whole site?
Yes.
It's a seventy thousand square foot lot. Again, it's, it's...
It's a giant rock.
It's a big rock. It's, it's for rock climbing, for outdoor recreation.
I thought this was a large, much, I thought the second option was a much larger piece of property.
We're only doing it to make the fire lane all the way through. Because it doesn't make sense for us to do a stub at sixty grand or just continue the driveway through and get it all over.
So what, what is happening to the, oh... What is happening to the parcel east of, is that Communication Drive?
In my opinion, it's, it's more valuable being combined, but if, if the planning board prefers to have two lots and rotate the lot line, that can provide frontage on Progress Road. But as Mr. Valois correctly pointed out, the larger the lots, the easier they are to sell. And that's why Mr. Long is here for this parcel. So there's, there's, there's water on Progress Road. There's, there's electric. There will be sewer as of, because of Mr. Long's project.
Will the price change now that he's buying another lot?
Well, I mean, I don't know. We're a year out and, I don't know. This is, I'm, I'm anxious, that's all, cause there's not a lot of information here and I'm...
I have a question.
Did you answer my question about the price being due? Because now he's purchasing another lot.
Right. So the final settlement price would be higher on a per square foot basis? It would be extended to everything he's purchasing?
And have we negotiated that or talked about that?
Well, this is pretty much a straight line mathematical equation at this point.
So I have a question about the open space. How does that work? Are we allowed to sell open space? And they're gonna use it for drainage? Is that what you're gonna use it for?
Yes, and access. There's no restriction on the open spaces. You would consider a, a cluster, residential cluster subdivision where the density of that open space is, is brought over to residential lots. In this instance, the industrial lots didn't have a requirement to create open space. It was really just kept out of the, the upland lot so that, uh, a future buyer wouldn't have wetlands and, and...
So you're gonna buy that to use it for your drainage?
In the upland portion only. Not, not, we're not gonna alter any, any wetland.
The top one is you're gonna use and that bottom one you're gonna leave alone?
I think so. Yes. This is the, uh, the building and, and the, uh, there's a drainage area here. The green is a protected wetland buffer as well as the wetland. And none of that will be altered. Uh, there's a piece of, of the fire lane that comes around the building that will go into this yellow area. We squared off the lot as the planning board normally likes that. And I, I didn't see any value to the town in this, this regard. I mean, we could put a conservation easement over this if, um, if the council, the planning board felt strongly about it, but it's the yellow areas where we're utilizing for drainage or, or access.
And the green are buffers?
The green are all buffers that aren't, aren't to be touched.
So you're gonna have a conservation easement on that and over on the top where the green is?
Yes.
Because I thought, go ahead, Tom.
This, um, proposal is seeing this lot. This was approved by the planning board, correct?
Not at that.
We, we need development plan review, as you, as you aptly know. We need development plan review in order to put a shovel in. We can't get there unless we, we have the description amended. Cause we don't have control over the right of way. We don't have control over these other open spaces. We have control over these individual lots for purchase and sales.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to explain this better, so I think everybody knows. You need an amendment on G1, the purchase and sales agreement, to include those open space areas.
Yes.
Okay. And this administrative subdivision that we're taking a look at, that was approved by the planning board, included those areas?
Conditionally upon the council vote, yes.
Okay. And your, uh, client is agreeable to having, um, a conservation easements placed over those?
Yes, over the wetland areas.
Right. But not the whole spot.
Not, not the yellow spot.
The yellow spots, but just the green.
And the fire lane that's on the building that's going through the yellow spot. So then my question with open spaces is if we do sell it, you have to create the same equal amount somewhere else, right?
Well, but it's a good principle to have. So my suggestion in that meeting was to put a conservation easement over that front piece. And you would end up net ahead of where you started.
And that's where I agree, as long as I can do my obstacle courses. Yes, that are gonna be permanent. I will open up a building and I, that was a great, that was perfect. That, that was the end of it right there. It was perfect.
So everybody understands. We, every development like this is gonna get to this point where it's like chicken, egg, chicken, egg. That building is located in pretty much the only place it can go. Because you have the high tension wires and the electrical company easements are pushing that building to the west. So they're gonna have that slight encroachment on the yellow area, that open space area. But what you're getting as a net result is a fire lane all the way around the building, a road big enough for heavy fire equipment to traverse all the way from Progress Road to Industrial Way on the other side. And he's still gonna get to build a building that he thinks is appropriate for his use. So really, there's not a lot of wiggle room. We just can't start flipping the building around and changing the footprint. And it's important to do this very methodically and step by step and not actually get ahead of yourself because that's where you get into trouble. The only thing you can do now, in my personal opinion, and I think the solicitor has weighed in and that's why I've arrived at this, my conclusion is abandon the road first, we'll close, and then they have to go through a planning board process. And we can't close, the town can't go to a closing until all of those conditions of the planning board are met. And he is not gonna want the property unless he can go forward anyway. So there's a lot of safeguards for you as a council, but it'd be helpful if the road abandonment were decided and if necessary, you know, some guidance to the rest of us in negotiating the rest of this. But if you like the sounds of it, swapping conservation, ending up with more and a purchase and sales agreement that includes a per square foot price for the existing, what he already wants to buy and extend that price out to the rest of the space he's buying, I think we're gonna end up in a good place.
I was just remembering the two buildings was because you were gonna do it in stages, correct?
Correct.
All right.
But it always, it always had a portion of the building sitting in that space.
Right. But now that you have more investors and you're able to do it all in one project...
There's more of a demand. There's more schools wanna be in there, so we doubled the courts inside. So first question would be, can we make the courts smaller? Go to your local soccer field and take fifty feet out of that soccer field and see what happens.
It's not gonna work.
So you can't play a true game of soccer. These courts are two hundred feet long. So if I take anything out of this building, it's going to affect the playing fields.
Okay, so, so we need to decide if we want to abandon the road. Now you had said that we have to determine it's not, what's the matter, Brad?
I, I was just, I'm sorry. I should've just waited, but I was wondering if anybody got a, a copy of the purchase and sale while we were talking?
I could open this to the public.
Yeah, okay. That maybe gave us some time. I really wanna see what that says.
Is somebody looking for the copy?
I will make that request. Someone can look for it, please.
May I make a suggestion?
We're a little light on information.
For the public hearing, I think it's appropriate for us to hear from your, uh, fire, police...
Which, my just walked in and that's why I didn't...
Yes, and perhaps even D W, just so you can make that finding of fact and have it stick on...
Before I open. Tony, before I open?
It's part of the public hearing.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. Okay. At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. Um, Chief White?
Madam President, we've had quite a bit of discussion about it. My major concern again was the traffic going in and out of this facility. And I've always from the beginning said I'd like to have at least, at least two points of access to this building. Mr. Long has agreed to give us that. The semantics of how we do that, I'm not sure legally how we do that, but from what I've been told by the solicitor, uh, this is the best appropriate way for us to still maintain that two points of access, but allow him to get what he needs and us to get what we need also. I'm, I'm in favor of this plan.
Thank you. Chief Blakey, do you have anything to add or...
Hello, Madam President. Do we have a plan to move from police?
Anyone from the public would like to speak? Now is the time, please.
Yes, Sally Black, sixty-four Brody Drive. Um, I've been watching this go on for years and I'm very excited about it. I heard the kids were gonna love it and that you won't need the kids. The kids are fabulous. The police won't have to come. But, um, I hope the council and the planning board can work this out with these people. And I've seen a very deliberate, um, process. It's not quick. We need to do this and, uh, but we really need to do this because you wouldn't believe the times at Tiverton is left out of different recreation things. They call it Newport County. And when we say, can we come in and have a team, they're going, no, there's no room. And I know other people be coming in, but I, I'm really excited for the, for the children of Tiverton. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Would anyone else like to speak?
Stu Hardy, Chair of the Planning Board. I can't speak for the entire planning board, um, but personally, uh, as Chair, I'm very much in favor of this project and will do everything I can to, to move it along, um, in an appropriate manner with all appropriate safeguards for the town of Tiverton, but also to move it along as, as quickly and as efficiently as possible.
Thank you, Stu. Anyone else would like to speak?
Barbara Pelletier. Oh, since we don't have a dog park or anything, and I was wondering, a lot of people do agility things with their dogs. I wonder if you could add some component of that and sell memberships for people with dogs?
Well, we are trying to do the open trails and the walking trails, so...
And, you know, do something like that. I'm not saying that you should do it for free for the town, but, I mean, there is a lot of call for...
No, I think the development calls for walking trails because the woods are nice out there. So that's something that we did request.
And you can always, you know, take off from there if there's a need for it. But I think that might be an opportunity to get that in.
All right, thank you, Barbara.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone from the public would like to speak? Mr. Palucci, would you like to say anything? Do you approve this plan? Have you looked at it?
Absolutely. And also, um, I think the fire chief was speaking about looping the water and it would be, and it would be, uh, the temporary road or the private road is, would also need an easement so the water could be looped through it. I don't know if he wants to speak to it, but that should have to be included in the easement when we, when we do, uh...
In further ado.
But all, all in all, it's a great plan.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak? I'd like to close the public hearing at this time. Did anyone find the original sales and purchase for, right yet? I think they're working on it. Anyone from the council like to say anything to our...
I just, I think we'd all like to see this happen. I mean, we've been waiting for, some of us over two years, some of us three years.
Almost four.
Four years. It, it has changed quite a few times.
It has. The demand was good, so that's one of the reasons we had to do it because it only made sense.
Right.
You know, when you have people like trying to get in and willing to commit, you don't say no. So we made it work, but I had to put a stop to it and here we are. So we're ready to go.
I, I, everyone else has spoken and I, I agree with every single one of them that it's something that we do need in the town. I'm glad you're here. Glad we're getting it done.
All right, um, I'm gonna recess for a couple of minutes while they're looking, cause...
I think that's appropriate.
I'm gonna take a five minute recess so we don't put anybody under too much pressure to find it.
Suggestion for you. I think the road abandonment is in order now. The road abandonment is in order now. A conditional, of course, upon, um, all the things that the planning board has to do. And I would suggest a motion in two parts. The first one to address the road abandonment, which is the petition. And on G1, uh, refer the matter to the planning board so that they can give you a recommendation at your next council meeting as to the amendments to the purchase and sales agreement, including, uh, the open space as well as the, um, lot that has been referred to at the front that has the big stone on it.
So you would say that would be a new purchase and sale agreement?
Well, G1 is an amendment to the purchase and sales agreement.
Okay.
So that essentially would be continued to your next meeting, but referred to the planning board so that this whole thing can be tied up and when it comes back to you have everything in front.
To make sure it's all included.
Because, I'm, I'm sorry, Madam President. If he's picking up that road that we're gonna abandon, that's property, correct? That we own now, that he doesn't. So you're gonna own it. So you gotta pay for it.
Well, originally, it was in my offer to put that building in. Remember, there was no road from the very beginning.
There was no road. Damn.
No, the road has always existed. The plans that were recorded are what is, what is there.
True. That in a file somewhere in your town hall, it's there.
No.
But when it's presented to me on paper, there was no road.
But what exists for the purposes of land use decisions and purchasing land and developing land is what is legally recorded.
Correct.
So, it, you know, the roadway, while not a physical being or a physical roadway, existed on paper. So whether or not, I mean, it, it's, it's akin to the argument that you drew your building on somebody else's land. That doesn't make that corner your land. We, we're work, we're hashing these things out now and I think that's reasonable. But I think that's part of why we need to talk about this PNS. Because if somehow we're looking at the second phase of the, of this second purchase and sale to, uh, sort of make up for the additional land areas and, and additional, um, utility, for lack of a better word, we need to understand what those terms are going to be. Cause the deal has changed. I think we can all agree on that. So it's important to see what that second, what that option, which is now going to be exercised likely, but, but we need to understand what that, what that looks like so that... I mean, the worst case scenario we don't want is we give, we abandon the road. We, we amend the P, the original PNS to include all those open space areas and then you decide not to buy the second lot. And we've just kind of shot ourselves in the foot a little bit and gone through all this work with that. So we wanna make sure those things are buttoned up before, um, we, and we can't sell land that doesn't, or, or land that's not available to sell.
I agree.
Okay, but just if I may, just to follow up on, on Councilman Perry's comment. Under twenty-four, six, two, the town is abandoning, um, the town would abandon this roadway. That's not the consideration. Uh, under the statute, the town doesn't get, get money for that.
No.
It's just abandoning.
It's an abandoned road.
Yes. However...
But we are realizing, and I think both sides of the table realize, there's additional utility to that action of abandoning that roadway. You get to build your building where you wanna build it and incite your parking lot and provide, provide the enhancements that you wanna do, that you can't otherwise do if there's a road there.
Correct.
I mean, so... I mean, so...
And we're meeting all the department heads' concerns, recommendations to have a, the access easement included.
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's fine, I think that's logical. It's everything but a road. You know, it'll look like a road, it'll smell like a road, it's just not legally a road. It's just a big driveway with public access.
Right, it'll be owned by Mr. Long.
With an easement to keep it open for emergency vehicles.
Okay.
Does Stu, Stu or Mark, the planner, with Mark, do you have any questions regarding it being referred to the planning board, and what the recommendations would be back to us?
No particular questions, just the process, then go back to the plan, but look at the construction standards, and what we do about modifying the master plan, look back at the original agreement. But I think we have a handle on that.
I just want to make sure it's clear.
So, because I've never served on the planning board, the finding of fact we have, Tony, is that a, is that a separate motion? Do we want to make a motion of a finding of, no?
I think you would incorporate it in your motion, and it would be based upon the testimony of your Chiefs of Police, Fire, and the DPW Director, that the road has ceased to become useful as a public way.
Okay. Well, I will make a motion that the Town Council finds that the road in question has ceased to become useful, I'm sorry, ceased to become useful for...
As a public way.
As a public way, based on the input from DPW, Police, Fire, Town Planner, Town Administrator, and whoever else. Subject, oh, and so, I think the two conditions I'd like to put on is it's conditional upon the easement being granted, and also conditional upon the combination of lots 56 and 57. Because without the combination, we've just landlocked 57. So, I think if, if we don't combine 56 and 57, the argument can't be made that it ceases to be useful as a public way, because that lot has no access. Right?
These two lots will be...
Right.
Which you recommend?
Yes.
Yeah. But we want to make sure that's done, so... Does that make sense to everyone?
Do you want to put an amendment?
That's part two of a separate motion.
That's gonna be part two, because...
Separate motion.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion?
Just said, just from listening to discussion from Stu, from the planning board, saying they moved this long, expedited the project, and from Mr. Long, I think we need to show this man that we can be business-friendly in this town. I'm hoping that we're gonna have a lot of cooperation to get this project going. It's long overdue. I think the town needs the facility and needs the revenue. Just to you personally, thank you for choosing our industrial parking, and your endurance, and hanging in there.
I know it's gonna work, I know it's gonna be successful, so, it'll work.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Unanimous. The second motion.
That would be in regard to item G1 on your agenda, the amendment to the purchase and sales agreement. And the recommendation there would be to refer that to the planning board regarding the description of the property, as well as the acquisition of the lot. Chris, which one is it, in the front?
804.
64.
64. Assistance lot 804, it's 64 on the recorded plot.
Okay. In lot 64 for a recommendation as to the amended purchase and sales agreement.
Do I have that motion?
I'll make that form of a motion.
Do I have a second?
Oh, just, and also add, to be referred back to the Town Council for our...
It has to be back.
Yeah, but do you want to set a date, so that we can...
Refer it back to the April 11th meeting.
Yeah.
So, I have a motion in the second, any further discussion? Any questions from anyone involved in the audience? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I just make an administrative request to the clerk, that when this comes back to us, we have the original PNS...
Signed.
Signed, and that includes the option, right?
Yes.
So, that includes the option, and any new language for both parcels. It's gonna be the same. Are we gonna split it out?
I just missed it, Jay.
I don't want to have a conversation off the record by accident.
We have a chance to vote again.
Go ahead, Matt. No, I just, to try to keep us on a reservation. All of our comments need to be addressed to the Chair, so that it's clear that it's not a private conversation. Councilman Pelletier has requested that when the purchase and sales agreement come back to the Town Council, that the backup for that conversation include the original signed PNS as amongst all the potties, which should include language referring to the option on the additional lots that was agreed to as part of that transaction. And then, the second piece of backup, gosh, I hope Attorney Offenberg's listening to me, should be a redlined copy, so that members of the Town Council of Tiburon can see where the agreement has been changed or added to. And that also should include meets and bounds for those portions of open space that are being added. And it should also include discussion of a conservation easement, a no-build easement over the front piece that referred to 804-64 lot.
I don't think she's listening, so it'll have to be communicated by Tony or someone in the morning.
And some maps that don't look...
Maps that do not require the use of a highlighter to understand, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
B3, Town Solicitor. Approve of proposed amendment, Article 11 definitions, and Article 5, Section 3, 4, and 10 use table, medical marijuana ordinance. The planning board recommendation, also.
What you have before you is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance that would regulate the growing of medical marijuana in this town. And under the State Enabling Act, as well as your own zoning ordinance, proposed ordinances of this nature are referred to the planning board for their recommendation, which the planning board has done, and you have. And then, it's here for the public hearing now. And as you can see, the planning board did make some suggestions that were different than what was originally proposed. I have to say that the planning board did an excellent job. They have some very good reasons, I know the Chair is here. He can probably explain them better than me, but it's quite good. And I'd like to say something further to you on this. The growing, the cultivation of medical marijuana is a use which is subject to your zoning ordinance. It's a policy decision on the part of the Town Council as to where you think the growing of medical marijuana is appropriate in the town, and of the types of growing as defined by the state of Rhode Island. So, ultimately, I think this is a decision that you all need to make. But I will tell you that you do have the ability to regulate the growing of marijuana in this town. And there are four different types of grow operations defined by the state of Rhode Island. The first one is the compassion center. And that's licensed by the Department of Health. The next one is a cooperative grow, where one or more cardholders can get together and grow the marijuana cooperatively. The next is by a caregiver. That is a person who grows for patients. And finally, the fourth one is the patient that has the card is allowed to grow on their own also. Those are the four types of things that you're looking at here. I can tell you that the planning board, and of course, Mr. Hardy is here, what they propose to the use table, first, they made some changes to the definitions, which I think are excellent. You have two components here that would amend the zoning ordinance. First, the definition section defining the growing of medical marijuana. And secondly, a change to the use table, to include these types of uses in the use table, where it's permitted and where it's not. For purposes of tonight's hearing, because the planning board made a recommendation, you will see that in their proposal, they have allowed patients to grow by right in all zones in the town. All other growth operations are not permitted. That's basically what the ordinance is before you. I think it's appropriate to start off with Mr. Hardy, if he doesn't mind, to giving a brief explanation of what the planning board has done here.
Hi. I was actually on travel on March 22nd, when this matter was deliberated, but Dave Saret, our Vice Chair, is here.
Hey, Dave.
Thank you. Yeah, just to give you a bit of a further explanation from what the solicitor was saying. In our discussion on this, we decided that the definition needed to be tweaked a little bit, because we wanted to make it very specific to a person who has a card for medical purposes to take and grow marijuana, and not somebody who is a caregiver, or a grower, or so forth. So, we thought that was an important, important piece, to make sure that definition was very clear. The other thing that we talked about was the fact that the original document had the allowed use in all the residential zones. Unfortunately, in this town, there's quite a few residences that are not in residential zones. They're in commercial zones, industrial zones. So, we didn't think, we didn't think it was appropriate to exclude those zones, because then you'd end up with a situation where you have a resident who has a card, and just happens to not be in the right zone in the town. So, that's why we came up with the, with the changes, to make it permitted in all zones within the town, but only for a single person who has a card for the medical marijuana, and in a residence. So, they couldn't, they're not gonna go into an office or a business and start growing marijuana. It's for a resident, single person with a card, resident, and only one, you know, one resident per, one person per resident. So, you couldn't have three people with cards. We want it to be, one person in the residence could grow the marijuana. And that's pretty much what our discussion was.
Question? Well, I thought the version I saw of this, the...
It's two.
Permitted it for personal in all zones, and now I'm looking at this one, it's not permitted.
It's two, Joe. There is Tony's, and then there's what, the planning board recommended?
No, there's two sides. Dave, I was on the phone.
Further in the file, okay. Didn't get that far, I guess. That's the version I saw.
You see it?
Okay, all right, that's where I'm screwing up, I didn't get far enough into the paperwork.
I have just a quick question. So, a person that has a card, only they can grow their marijuana for themselves, they cannot...
In their residence.
Only theirs.
Right, they can't grow for somebody else.
So, how much could they grow?
Six plants.
Six.
It is six?
Six adult plants?
Twelve, twelve.
Twelve and twelve, right?
Twelve and twelve.
I thought I heard twelve, too.
Yeah, it's...
Wait a minute, wait, wait, I didn't open it up to the public yet. Is it six, Tony?
Well, it's six, I think, mature in six seasons.
No, I thought it was twelve adults, twelve babies, twelve, twelve.
All right, twelve and twelve. That's right, that's right, that's right.
No, wait, 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 please, I haven't...
We're thinking of changing it to limited.
I will open it up to the public very soon. It's okay.
Twelve and twelve.
Yeah, we didn't get into a great discussion. You know, it's regulated by law, we weren't trying to regulate what the law says. It was just that a single person with a card for their personal use.
So, it would be the patient, and that's why you put the patient in there. You changed the wording, well, you added patient to personal.
Can I ask, what, what does, what, we see residence, I mean, if there's a shed or a greenhouse on the property, does that qualify as indoors?
Tony?
There's no restriction on a patient, at least in the law, as to where it's grown on the property.
So, it could be in the backyard?
Yes.
No, it has to be indoors.
See, I'm hearing two different things, too. I heard it was only indoors.
It could be in the backyard and the greenhouse.
Correct.
It's gonna be indoor.
But it has to be indoors.
Okay.
And together.
Because that's what I thought we were hearing, there was some dispute about somebody using high-intensity sodium lights and all kind of stuff.
Indoors.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, my question then is that, how are we gonna know? So, they're gonna have to get a permit, then they're gonna have to come in front of the zoning board?
No.
No.
It's as if, right.
That's by right.
Right.
I just, because I thought someone was mentioning maybe a special use permit, and then not.
Yeah, that was right.
Not enough of the proposal you have in front of you.
No, I know, that's why I'm just...
But we could change it to that.
You could.
Well, you should understand, the discussion we had with the solicitor at the planning board's meeting is that you are not allowed to ask somebody if they have a card for... There's all kinds of laws that deal with that, that we brought before us, so, that's part of why we looked at this, is you, you're not supposed to have, somebody doesn't have to come and tell you, "I have a card."
Right, but if the police went in there to make sure that it was legal, I think the police would be able to, to not, that's not a HIPAA violation at that point.
Ask the chief.
The chief, come here.
Chief Blakey can address that, but the answer is, is if, you know, the police are there, and they're doing an investigation, the card is...
They find these marijuana plants, then they could say, "Who has a card?" So, if you went into a resident, and they were, they were growing marijuana, could you ask who has a card to do this?
Yes.
Right.
Not specifically so why they have the card, but...
Right, but who has the card, and the card...
I'm sure that card would be out as quick as it could possibly be, yes.
But what we're talking about is coming to Town Hall, copying the card, have that on record, not to HIPAA violation, because...
We can't get them from the Department of Health.
Right.
Then, the other question is the electrical upgrades, because then we have an issue on another piece of property. So, how are we gonna control the upgrades that are required for the manufacturing of the growing?
Well, I think, I think that this level, it would be minimal. I think what we were talking about was large-scale operations that would require...
No, I think even the small ones require an upgrade in electrical. Why do a little bit of work? Not that I care, I'm just wanting to make sure that if they're going forward...
I've actually been doing some research online, I looked at High Time Magazine, and... They actually now have LED grow lights, which is cutting down on, I guess, the amount of amperage you need, whereas the sodium, I don't know, it's pretty complicated. And I grow my tomatoes, I just put them in a greenhouse, it's easier, but the... But I'm saying it, I think what, and what Brett's going on is, when you have the multiple, like, when somebody has three or four cards, and you're growing that many plants, then you have, you know, 12 lamps, or 14 lamps, whatever, shining off a 20-amp service. That's when the fire codes start to, you know, you start...
And that was, what Pete is referring to is, we did have an issue with that.
Yeah, so, I just wanted to make sure that if you're going forward. But if one card with 24 plants, I guess, the upgrade won't be necessary.
Any other discussion from the council for now, before I...
I have a question, and it's sort of just thinking out loud, so we can all learn together, I guess. Anybody can answer this, if anyone knows, just let me know. If the basis is that we want to provide individuals who have cards the flexibility to grow their own plants, it is my understanding that a great number of the folks who would benefit from, from that flexibility could potentially be afflicted with a condition that would not physically permit them to cultivate an intent, you know, I mean, essentially become a farmer in their house.
Generally, there's a caretaker there who can take care of it.
We're not allowing that to happen.
Well, I mean, this is something that's gonna happen in their own home. It's not like, the guy's gonna be growing his stuff in his... You know what I'm saying, if it's cultivated in the patient's house, you know, I don't think it's a problem.
It's often used for...
It's when, it's when somebody picks up... It's when somebody picks up three or four cards, as we just said, that's when it starts to become a problem. And they're transporting stuff in their...
I know, but I'm thinking, if we're, you know, I know at least in one instance that it helps...
It helps pain.
Yeah, and it helps, you know, chemotherapy patients to take food better and to have some semblance of a normal existence. If I am that person, I am not, I'm not gonna keep a house plant, let alone cultivate 12 marijuana plants in a spare bedroom. So I'm wondering if the idea is that we want to provide some amount of compassionate flexibility to people who would benefit from growing and taking marijuana medically, isn't, are we not leaving a portion of those people out, who potentially may best be suited to benefit from that?
Because we don't have someone, because we don't have languages that someone can assist in the growing. If someone has a card...
I don't know, I don't know.
Right, no, if so...
So I guess what I'm saying, yeah, is you're gonna have to bring somebody in to do that, I suppose.
Or someone who lives with you could water it or do it in his...
I'm just saying, if I'm an elderly person who lives in, you know, lives in a small residence or...
Please, only one conversation at a time, Peter.
Brett, if I could.
Yeah.
I'm saying, that's the person who would probably go over to Portsmouth to the compassion center. Or, and I, from what I understand, a lot of it's turned into a butter or something that they can put on the food.
Yeah, I mean, they put it in all kinds of stuff now, I guess.
So it's...
Candy and cookies and things, but I'm...
And brownies, of course.
Yeah, I guess.
But...
I'm just, I'm just saying, if the idea is that this, the whole point of medical marijuana is that it helps people who need help, then making the people who are most aggrieved by the illness that they are facing drive to Portsmouth, or get a ride from somebody else, or find someone who takes care of their plants for them, I, that is, that just, that occurred to me, and that's, you know...
Here's the grades. The first one is, is the patient has the card, the patient can cultivate. The next step up is the caregiver. The caregiver can grow on their own site, and then they can sell to the patients, okay? That's step two. And that's actually one of the largest areas of growth.
You say on their site, whose site?
In their home.
Yeah, they, where they cultivate it, that's what they have, they have a caregiver card. In other words, they're cultivating for others.
In some other town.
It could be in that town.
Could be anywhere.
But we're not allowing that.
That's correct.
That's what I'm saying. Hypothetically, if this ordinance passes, that person does not cultivate in Tiverton. They cultivate somewhere else, and they bring it to Tiverton to a patient who cannot access it otherwise.
Yes. You need to look at all four grades.
Because when I think caregiver, I think of a home health aide or something, not somebody who's cultivating and selling marijuana.
That's what it is.
Okay, so, can we call that something more specific than caregiver?
That's what the house defined, that's how it's defined in state law.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, what you have is, is you can get a caregiver license, which allows you to cultivate for patients.
All right, now we all are on the same page. At least I'm on it.
It's not one specific patient, but patients.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
And then what's the next level?
Then the next level is the cooperative grow, where caregivers can get together and pool their resources. And there's two types, and the cooperative grow can be in a residential setting, or it could be in a commercial setting, that's by state law. Each one is governed by different criteria in the state law. And then the fourth is the compassion center. So those are your four grades, essentially.
Just, ma'am president, oh, sorry.
We could theoretically, and I know we're not talking about it in this proposal, but those cooperatives, we could technically license those, or require some kind of special permit, because we're not, there's no HIPAA requirement, there's no, right, or am I...
Under the state law, one of the things that you need to do for a cooperative grow is post a notice saying that you comply with local regulations, including zoning, by the way.
Yeah.
So in that instance, for the HIPAA, the patients aren't implicated in that. These are the cooperative growers getting together, so I don't see the same protections that somebody who's doing the grow personally would have.
Okay. Because, I mean, that, for me, the large-scale, for lack of a better word, commercial or cooperative operation is where we are most sensitive to building and zone, building code violations and things like that. We don't want, you know, large, unpermitted electrical services and overloaded stuff, and we want to make sure that that's safe for the, for the people and for the neighborhood, but I'm just sort of talking out loud, sorry.
But this ordinance, it's being proposed to just for personal growth.
For now, it is, yes.
Not, not any other...
That's correct, yes.
Change it every time.
Yeah, we could, but I just want to make a point.
Yes.
So if we wanted to do a caregiver...
Oh.
You could.
Yeah, we could.
Ma'am president?
Yes.
Just to expand on what Brett was talking about, about when you have the, you get to that level where you have multiple licenses coming together, and that's, as you said, that's when we come into problems with the electrical permitting and things like that. But the town, I mean, could theoretically, if we had a zone, say, I don't know, in an industrial area where we had empty buildings or whatever, which we don't have a lot of, but a city like Providence does, I know, but theoretically, you could license that as a zone where those people could operate.
Yes.
So it'd be, say, by special use permit, or, you know, whatever.
That's correct.
Because I think we're gonna hear some arguments tonight. I mean, I just, personal experience, a fellow who has thyroid issues and was losing, burning off weight, is, I guess, your metabolism really kicks up, and he's always aspiring. It's actually, his dentist figured it out. When he went to work on his teeth, he said, "You're burning up." But he actually, to be able to eat, and he's one of the ones that makes the, whatever, the butter, and he grows it in his own home, and that's the person we're addressing tonight, is that person. I mean, it's...
Okay. All right, at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public, if that's all right with the council. Any comments from the public? Please come to the microphone. Just state your name. Just state your name and address before speaking, please.
Sure. My name is Joanne Lepinen. I'm the executive director of the Rhode Island Patient Advocacy Coalition. We're in Providence, and at Three Bell Street, and we are the folks who initially went to the legislature to suggest that we might have a medical marijuana program. We are a nonprofit organization, and what we fundamentally do is, we're concerned with education about this program. It is a very much misunderstood program sometimes, and the law can be very complicated and hard to understand, so that's why we're here. And I was also asked to come tonight because you will find that a lot of patients and caregivers who are growing their own medicine do not want to come out in public and talk about it. If you're growing your own medicine, you want to be discreet. You don't want to announce it to the world. Therefore, the people who are speaking tonight are speaking for a lot of people who live in Tiverton, who are patients. So I'd like to start out by saying, this is a very serious program. Right now, program's been around for 10 years now. To qualify for this program, you have to have a severe debilitating medical condition. It ranges everywhere from HIV to AIDS, glaucoma, to the last stages of cancer. So we have a whole range of patients with very complicated medical conditions, needing all kinds of different levels of medication. So that's what makes this program particularly complicated, because it's not a cookie cutter. We can't say one size fits all. So when the legislature created this program, one of the things that they did, excuse me, one of the things that they did was to give patients options, which is so important. Remember, when this program started, the issue was, what the legislature wanted to do was make sure that people who are using cannabis for medical reasons didn't have to worry about getting arrested. That's the first thing. Remember, that was not so long ago, really, when people were getting arrested for medicating. So the first thing they did was say, "We're gonna protect you from that." But then the question really became, well, where are they supposed to get it? Are we telling them to go to the drug dealers? Like, who sponsored this legislation? The drug dealers of America? Because it just didn't make any sense. So there's been an evolving process to try to find patients safe access to this medicine, and it's been a challenge. So the way it started out was to say, legislature said, "Okay, of course we don't want you going to drug dealers. If that's what you gotta do, you gotta do it, but that's dangerous. So you know what? You can grow your own. You can grow your own." So we came back with, well, we have people in this, as you pointed out earlier, we have people in this program who can't get out of bed. They're not gonna be able to grow their own plants. Many people live in federal housing. Many people just, it's not appropriate for them to be growing, and they're physically unable to. And it takes a long time to get it right. So they said, "Okay, you could appoint two caregivers to do that for you." Of course, at the time, this was all new, no one really knew what they were doing, quite frankly. So you could appoint up to two caregivers, and caregivers in the medical marijuana program are individuals over the age of 21 who pass background checks, who the patient appoints to take care of them. And they don't all grow medicine, but generally, when we're talking about caregivers, we're talking about people who grow for the patients, or otherwise, maybe go to the compassion center to buy it for the patients. So that's how the caregivers came about. Caregivers are an important part of this program. You have a lot of spouses, you know, one spouse grows for the other, you have a lot of family members, who start out taking care of a patient, and the patients depend on them. It's a really important, serious function. We only have about 3,000 or so caregivers in the state. We could have a lot more, but we don't. Patients have been very conservative in choosing caregivers, but they remain a really important part of this program. Without them, we've got thousands of patients who no longer have access to medicine. So I don't think anyone wants to take caregivers away from patients, and I afraid that, I'm afraid that that's what this ordinance does, and not all patients should be growing in their homes. Not all caregivers should be growing in their homes. A gentleman wanted to be here tonight, he's a patient, his name is Peter. He's paraplegic, he's spent his whole adult life in a wheelchair. His, he has a daughter who's, I think she's eight years old now, and he was successfully growing his own medicine in the house, small house. And his wife said to him one day, "You know, our daughter is seven years old, her friends are coming over here all the time, I don't want them around plants." So he went out and rented a place where he successfully grows. So as he said to another town when they proposed to restrict patients to just growing in their residences, "If you're telling me I have to grow with my kids, if you're telling me I have to grow with my seven-year-old daughter, because we don't have much space, then I'll go home and tell my wife that." But is that wise, really, to force people? That's, it's so complicated. It might sound good, grow in your own home, you know, but that's not right for everybody. It just isn't. So some people find other spaces. Some people find, maybe a friend will lend them a space, maybe a friend will lend them a garage, maybe a friend will lend them a commercial area, or maybe they will rent it. That happens a lot. The other category we have, which is kind of new, relatively new, is the co-ops. The co-ops are the most regulated kind of grow you can have. Two kinds of co-ops. There's non-residential and residential. Your ordinance will get rid of both of them. Again, these are really important, valuable sources of medicine for patients. So the non-residential ones have to be registered with the state police, they must be inspected by local building inspector, who must sign off on the zoning, as well as, you know, everything's up to code. A residential, a residential co-op means that must have a sort of, you must have an affidavit from electrician saying the wiring is safe, and also must be registered with the state police. So that's just basically the 101 on who's growing, and I think it's great that you obviously want to protect people and, you know, understand how important it is for people to grow in their own residence, and that's really important, and I appreciate that. But in the process, you really have to think about this really seriously, because you will be, in effect, denying people this medicine that is really valuable to them. And I cannot tell you how many people who have a quality of life that they wouldn't otherwise have, or who are in fact alive today, who wouldn't be alive. So this is very serious territory, so I really urge you to take it seriously. Also, you should have received a communication from the ACLU. We do believe that this ordinance undermines the state law, and we question how much towns and cities have authority. Once the state says something can be and license it, can the towns and cities take it away? So that's a question that will probably be resolved by the courts. Right now, we don't have any towns or cities who have done what you're trying to do, so, and the towns and cities that we've worked with so far have decided not to go down that road. So I mean, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and do anything I can to help you with the process, but it is a very complicated program, and I urge you, and people's lives are at stake, so I really urge you to take this seriously and really understand, really understand the situation that patients are in before you take any, before you take any action.
Tony, we didn't receive anything from the ACLU, correct?
Yeah, we did.
Actually, Kate came in today.
Oh, okay.
But I, if I may, just address that, because that is something that comes up, it's a preemption argument. Has the state taken over on this? At least in two of the categories that I've talked about, state law specifically references zoning, so cities and towns do have the ability to zone, at least on the compassion centers, and also on the cooperative grows. That's both residential and non-residential. Now, I just want to say something else. The state has preempted local control over the consumption of alcohol and the sale of alcohol. However, alcohol, the sale, is subject to zoning. Even though it's something that the state starts off with, with their laws, it is subject to local control. I do think that activities in this town, even in activity like this, is something that is able to be regulated through zoning. And I'll give you another example. One thing you can't do is regulate what residents have for other pain medications, because essentially, that's what this is. This is a form of a pain medication. However, the distribution of those pain medications is subject to zoning. So this is clearly something you can do. However you think it's appropriate for your particular community, whatever the uses are, you have that opportunity. Mrs. Lepinen has made some compelling arguments. Do whatever you want, but you have the ability to regulate. I think that's clear.
May I? Yeah. I agree about the co-op, because there's very specific reference to zoning in the co-op statutes, but I don't agree as to your other comments, because it's yet to be determined. You know, it really has yet to be determined how much the cities and towns can regulate this, and it just, the courts haven't, the courts haven't dealt with it yet.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, a question for the solicitor, if I could.
I was just gonna do some public comments for a little bit.
No, no, go ahead, do what you're doing. I'll wait.
Okay.
I'm sorry. No, my question was for the solicitor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next, please.
My name's John Mello. Just hoping that we hold that comments till the end once I close it. My name's John Mello. I'm actually a caregiver for somebody. And just from sitting here, listening to this, I would highly recommend that most of you educate yourself on the subject before maybe you bring it in front of people, because you guys really don't sound educated about it. I've heard it brought up to alcohol, it's actually a medicine. It's the only medicine I can take. I can't take anything. I have a debilitating liver issue. My liver's dying. I need this. This is the only thing I can take. I can't take opioids, which are highly, highly marketable, and people get prescriptions and sell those all the time. Or like alcohol, like you said, you know, you should zone it. You probably should. You know, moonshiners, I'm pretty sure I can go buy a thing to make beer at Walmart, but we're not zoning for that now, are we? I actually am a caretaker for somebody who can't move from the waist down, sometimes from the waist up. He shakes violently, and it's one thing to say it to you, but until you see it, it's a little bit different. And this happens to children, it happens to people all the time. And it seems like most people don't take the time to educate themselves on something that really, really, really has been studied, and has been proven, has been proven to help people. I'm a caregiver. Now, if you take this away, how is that person supposed to help themselves? You might say, "Oh, they can go and purchase it." This person's on SSDI. They live in a fixed income of $1,100 a month. $1,100 a month. She doesn't own her home, she rents. And you said, "Sell." I don't sell anything. I've never not once sold anything. Never not once. I help people. Selling's the wrong word. If you would have read and educated yourself, you also would have known that. I just feel that you people really need to take this into consideration, just on caregivers alone. Because there's a lot of people that can't move and can't help themselves. And just by getting rid of caregivers, just for a couple people, you're actually helping somebody else be debilitated. You're actually helping them not be able to move, not be able to medicate themselves. People who can't take medication, that most of us take for granted, like NyQuil. I can't take NyQuil. NyQuil is so bad for your liver, you can't take it. There's nothing I can do. The only way I can go to sleep is by medical marijuana. And my mind races. This actually hurts me. I'm a town Tivon resident, and it actually hurts me that this was actually brought up without anybody even knowing the plant count, or what it even was. That you guys brought this up and just decided to get rid of caretakers. It's not a degree. There's no degrees of it. You're a patient, you're a caregiver, all you have, co-ops. I'm a patient and a caregiver. I'm a caregiver to someone who's a patient who needs this. Without me, they are in a lot of trouble. And this goes for many, many, many other people. That's all I have to say. I really, really, really hope you guys actually do your homework on this before anything is set in stone. Please, I urge you. Thank you.
Madam President, could I, before you leave, could I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Can you just talk to me a little bit about what the process is for a caregiver? There's, I know that there's going to be a licensing.
A caregiver is the same thing. You have to go through a BCI check. So, you have to go to the state or to get a BCI check. So, that means a criminal background check. You have to get it. Okay? So, not only am I a patient, what patients the doctors can prescribe to you, but a caregiver, you actually have to go get a background check from the state. The state then says, "Yes, you've passed your background check. You are now a caregiver for somebody." And that person that has to find you for a caregiver, it's not like you go and you solicit yourself, or you put ads out in the paper. It's usually somebody that you know, or somebody you feel like you can help who needs it. It's not so much as to turn a profit or to do something else. I'm sure there are people, I can't speak for everybody, but the majority of people, and the majority of people I know, use this for help. It's not like it was in the '70s when people went to Woodstock. There's science now that proves this. And it bothers me that this is actually brought up and used to alcohol. This is something that I need. I need it just to survive.
So, a patient that would be prescribed by their doctor, and they would get what we call medical marijuana card, and then that person would authorize you or another, is it a licensed, would I call it a licensed caregiver or a certified caregiver? What is the terminology?
Well, you're a caregiver to the person. When you, when you become a patient, you're allowed to, I'm trying to pick the word, you get two caregivers.
You appoint those two.
You appoint those two. Now, the centers, now, that's just alone. If you want to go to the one that's the closest, that's a middle town. That means you have to give one caregiver card to them. If you want to go to Providence, which is very out of the way, and most people can't even make it that far, have the money to even go to either one, they have to give the other card to them. So, that means those people are pretty much at the hand side. They can't grow, and then they need to find somebody to bring them there and bring them back.
So, that's the situation, if someone is unable to grow, and they're also, they also don't have anyone that they trust or they know that is able to do it as well?
It's hard, because a lot of them don't even want to say anything. A lot of them feel like, like I'm standing up in front of a lot of people right now, and I feel like all eyes are on me. And it's something I do every day, I don't feel like I'm doing anything wrong, and I'm not. It's just that a lot of people don't want to come out and say it, because they're scared that they're going to be ridiculed. And I don't understand, I still have no idea why. It's something that helps more people. It's science, it's proven it. I mean, it's, I just hope that everybody educates themselves.
This is helpful, thank you.
Just to let you know, I am a registered nurse, and I do have a lot of, I do care for patients who have medical marijuana. So, I am somewhat educated, and I do know how much medical marijuana has helped a lot of my patients that I've dealt with. So, I don't want you to feel, I do know what you're talking about. And this is a proposal, and this was what it was meant to do for those of us who don't know as much, and also for some of us to learn about it. So, this is how we are going through the process. This is just a proposal, and this council can change it as they wish.
Okay.
I just have one question for the gentleman.
Sure.
You are a cardholder, then?
Yes, yes.
So, what, if we do anything with this, it's not going to affect you at all?
If, by how, by, what do you mean by?
You'll still be able to grow your 12 plants, or?
Me, unless for my caregiver, unless for my, I'm a caretaker. Yeah, except for the person that can't move.
Personally, you will be fine.
Yeah, that's for me.
Okay.
Now, what about that person that can't move, though?
I'm just saying, I'm just talking.
Yeah, but if you're bringing one in, you kind of have to bring the other in, because if it was only me, then we're actually taking somebody out of the equation.
You said before that would be taken away from you. We would not be taken away.
No, you wouldn't be taken away from me. You'd be taking, you'd be taking it away from someone that needs it, which is a caregiver.
Thank you.
The only other, the only other question I have, and I really don't know the answer. You have a card as a patient, so you can grow 12 plants.
Yes.
Now, if you are a caregiver, you can grow additional plants now in your home for that patient.
For that patient, yes. But the thing is, a lot of us only grow in our homes. We don't have a whole lot of room. So, pretty much 12 is pretty much 12. You get 12 for everybody. You know, it's the way it works. But, like, let's say if I was to make butter, the butter would take more. Okay? Let's say if spider mites happened, then now you've ruined a whole crop. So, it's not as easy as a plant count. There's many, many other factors that go into it. It's just like farming. I'm sure many people have had strawberries in their backyard, and next thing you know, it's white mold on, all your strawberries are garbage. It's the same thing.
But as a patient, growing, you cannot give it to another person unless you're the caregiver for that person.
Unless you're the caregiver.
So legally, you cannot.
Or if, let's say if someone approaches me, and they are also a patient.
And they have a card.
And they have a card. Then you take donations. What they, all that is, is for your time and electricity that you would put in. It's almost nothing.
It's very complicated.
It's more complicated than when I'm trying to get out in a little teeny bit of time. But I just, that's all. I just really urge you all just to take a big deal.
Thank you very much for coming forward, because it has educated us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Madam President. Distinguished members of the council, my name's Joel Bishop. I live here in Tiverton as well. I'm also a patient. I have a genetic disorder called Ehlers-Danlos syndrome. Doesn't look like I have any problems, but it takes me probably an hour to get out of bed every day, and it makes my life hell. My cousin is a lot worse than me, and she's recently got on disability, and she is addicted to painkillers, because she didn't know any better, and the doctors gave her painkillers, and that's what she's hooked on. My brother is the same. He lives up in New Hampshire. He's also addicted to painkillers. He's in rehab now, and it's pretty much ruined his life. I've been a caregiver as well for a short time. When I came here, I bought a farm. I own the old Lyden Farm over on Cornell Road. And you talk about plant counts and how you produce medicine for people, and it's very expensive. And what John was saying, a lot of people, they can't, they can't grow for themselves, and they can't afford it. So, you go over to one of these places like Greenleaf in Portsmouth, and they're charging up to $400 for an ounce of marijuana. And that might make, you know, a couple of sticks of butter. It's not much, and people just, they can't afford it. I actually have a commercial greenhouse, 11,000 square foot greenhouse. And I, maybe this proposal's because of me, I don't know, but I came to the town and wanted to start up a non-residential co-op, working with Joanne, because I want to help patients to get the medicine they need and that they can't afford. And I feel like what we're doing is we're saying, "Yeah, you can produce this medicine for yourself, as long as you do it inside your basement, and you pay, you know, hundreds of dollars every month for lights, and you're down there working." And it's a lot of work. And the more plants you have, the easier it is, because five plants take about as much work as 30 plants. It's, it really comes down to the electricity. And I have a greenhouse. My hope was that I could start up a non-residential co-op, so that I could help people and work with Rhode Island patients to help provide medicine for people at very low costs. I mean, we can provide medicine, I believe, at a fraction of the cost that these care centers are charging. But it seems like there's just a lot of permitting, and there's a lot of, a lot of bumps, and a lot of people putting up red tape, which I kind of feel is what we're doing here. And we're not helping patients by any of this. We're just making it harder and pushing people back underground, and that's what's going to happen.
Good question, please.
Yes.
What is the street value of an ounce of marijuana now? Do you know?
I don't know. It's probably different depending on where you are.
$400 an ounce at the compassion center?
At the compassion center, yeah.
And how many ounces would you produce if you could produce what you wanted out there?
In the greenhouse?
Yeah.
It would depend on plant counts, whether you're going to be a non-residential or residential co-op. I really don't know.
I mean, could it be like 20 ounces?
Yeah, maybe.
I'll tell you where I'm going with this, and this was my issue with having a facility out in the south end of town. When I started reading about some of this stuff, I started hearing about gang members robbing these facilities with, you know, going in with semi-automatic weapons and robbing the places. Because there's so much value there in that crop, when you're talking about, you know, hundreds of dollars for an ounce.
Where has it happened?
It's happened all over the country, where it's, you know, where marijuana is cultivated in large facilities. I mean, it was part of the argument I had against this, because I think, and it was talked about in Portsmouth, when they wanted to put the one over there, he had to put in all kinds of security. So, that, if we were going to create some sort, you know, I'm not totally against this, because I know there is a need, but my problem is the security. I mean, you can't rely on, we might have two cops on the route at any given time in Tiverton, maybe three, if, you know, one's not nailed to the desk. But, you know, this type of facility, I mean, it's not like you can just do it in your greenhouse. I mean, you need security. It's, that's the problem, I think. Otherwise, you could be shot and robbed. I mean, there's no way a town can provide that security. When you're talking about that amount of money, I mean, it's a target, you know? That's why I kind of agreed with having it, so that, you know, it's small, a lot of people doing it, but only doing a little bit, you know? So, I mean, if we need to work on where you can take care of one other person, but for you to be able to take care of 10 people and cultivate that much, I just think is a target. And that's, that was my main concern. It wasn't that what you provide, it was the security issue of it, so.
No, I hear your concern for sure. Security is absolutely important, and just like in Portsmouth, they put up cameras, putting up cameras that go directly to the police station. I'm sure it would help to ward off gangs. To the best of my knowledge, we haven't had any problems with gangs in Rhode Island or anywhere in New England, as far as this goes. I haven't heard anything on the news, yeah.
We're right next door, brother. What do you tell you?
But I think the real point is that it's cost prohibitive for people to be growing marijuana that's medical grade in their musty basement, which is sort of where we're pushing this. And it needs to be a community, and the co-op is really the best way to go, because it's not having individuals doing their individual thing. Maybe they have mold on their marijuana, maybe they have bugs on it. It would be, it would be people that are all interested coming together and working together, and I'm sure we could solve the security issues with fences around the greenhouses and cameras that go directly to the police and so forth.
Thank you.
Just one second, just for you. If I saw that there was an organized effort amongst the people that are here tonight, and you could come forward with a definite plan, at any time, this could be amended. But without seeing, I mean, if we were to pass this tonight, all right, a compassion center, or, you know, cultivation center, I mean, could be added into our ordinance by a vote of a council in a public hearing. But without some kind of a coherent plan that shows me that it could be done safely. I mean, because, because quite frankly, what I'm hearing a lot is, a lot of these guys are not just selling to patients. A lot of it's getting sold to people that aren't cardholders, so.
And I think more regulation will address that exact issue. I will definitely work with these guys to bring a plan before you win. When I first asked about it, Mr. Mello sent me a letter saying that even though I could grow plants commercially on my 16-acre farm, that marijuana, because it can't be grown commercially, doesn't fit into that, doesn't fit into that, and therefore, he actually said in the letter that I can have a, until this, of course, that I could have a residential co-op.
Who said that?
Peter Demello, attorney.
But just see, what I'd be willing to do is to ask for a post.
You're not an attorney?
To extend a public hearing, maybe, to the next meeting, if you wanted to bring something back, if you really think you could bring something to the council coherent, I would be willing to try to, you know, continue the public hearing.
Anyone else from the public? Thank you so much.
I just have a question, I guess, for you, Tony. It's like, obviously, the question is, how do we balance the compassionate care issue with the legalities and not wanting this to spread throughout town, no pun intended? But the question I wanted to ask was, can you limit, like, in a compassionate grow, could you limit the number of licenses for that? Not, I mean, a group, whatever that category was when you had a group of patients coming together to grow something? Is there, I'm sorry, what was it?
Co-op.
A co-op, thank you. Could you limit the number of people there? Because in some ways, that kind of situation gives us more of a legal, legal control, because we're not dealing with HIPAA, and we're able to, you know, have other agencies come in and take, you know, they have to go, but the state, they have to, you know, there are other, there are other things that they have to do. And I'm just trying, I mean, I know what we're trying to do, and I'm just trying to get the information myself, but would the state be, I mean, would the town be able to limit the number of?
No. The answer to your question is no.
Okay, so that.
Under 21-28.6-14, a cooperative grow is two or more cardholders. The limitation is not on the cardholders. The limitation is on the plants. That's the limitation under the state. That's something that the town could not regulate.
Okay, so that answers my question. I was just trying to figure out if that made better sense than trying, I mean, I can see what we're all trying to do in terms of limiting it to one person, one residence, or whatever, but that also is hard for law enforcement, because how can they monitor that? And I'm just trying to think if maybe the other way would be easier for the town to.
If I may, what the town can do is regulate where these go, and that's what the zoning, that's what zoning's all about. So, that's the attempt, that's the attempt at local regulation. It's location.
Renee?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Renee Jones.
So, I just, if I could, please. So, I'm clear. What they would be, what the speakers have been talking about would be a non-residential cooperative cultivation, that would fall under that portion of the ordinance?
Well, I think they're addressing three things. The first thing is the cooperative grow, which breaks down to a residential and a non-residential.
And the difference is what? I'm sorry.
It's just, it goes by the state regulations. There's different requirements for each. And for a commercial grow, which is in a commercial area, there's a higher regulatory[1697.83] there's, there's a higher regulatory criteria that needs to be met. It's slightly less than residential. The other thing that they're addressing is the, whether or not the caregiver would have the ability to grow for patients. And if I may, uh, by state law, caregivers can charge. It's supposed to be limited to their costs, but they can charge. The other thing is, is I, and I can tell you, there is at least one organization in the state that links up caregivers with patients. So if a patient doesn't have a caregiver, they can go and find one.
So what they're requesting, though, is that non-residential cooperative cultivation? That's what they're requesting?
I think what they're requesting is not to enact the zoning ordinance.
Well, well, what I'm saying, under the.
Not have any regulars.
If we did have, right, I mean, you know, marijuana store, compassion center, I don't think anybody on this council wants to vote to see those.
You don't know that, but.
Well.
We'll see.
I, that's my personal view, but, uh, on the, as far as them being able to do the co-op, what part of the, of this ordinance would it fall under?
Well, basically, what you have is a cooperative grow with either residential or non-residential. Is not a permitted use under both of the proposals you have, the original one and from the planning board. Also, uh, under both, if you are a caregiver, it's not a permitted use in any zone.
Mike, all right, let me tell you where I'm going with this. Let's say, for instance, they did come forward with a plan that they wanted to say rent a building up in the north end cooperatively. They were gonna get together and lease a building up there. If something was built like that into our ordinance, what would that be considered? Would it be a marijuana cultivation center?
Yeah, it'd be part of, it'd be part of the use table and that's what it would be, um, it would be a marijuana cultivation center. I'm, I'm sorry. Non-residential cooperative cultivation, residential cooperative cultivation. Those are the top two.
Okay. So if it was in a commercial zone, it'd be the non-residential cooperative. And that's where I'm going. I, I mean, first, as I said previously, I think they have to come forward with something to show this council that they could put a plan together to actually do something. If it's that important and they want to do a co-op, you need to have some sort of a, you know, business plan to go forward. I mean, it needs to be kind, I think it would make it a little more legitimate.
I think that's, that's a dangerous path to go down, that we, we, we make long-term changes to zoning to accommodate a single applicant because once we change that, it doesn't, that, that burden of proof doesn't exist for anyone else, just the first person. Do you know what I mean? You're making an individual group specifically come to us and petition and say, here's what we want to do. So we change the zoning to accommodate those types of operations. The second guy, the second guy.
What do we do with the gun range? We did that to him, didn't we?
No.
We didn't make him come forward with a proposal for his plan and then the council had to come forward with a license.
Well, that was a totally different, that was a totally different.
Actually, excuse me, but let me just answer that. This, this, even though it says it's, I'm using the term "commercial" and I shouldn't. It's residential and non-residential. That means the grow is in a non-residential zone and it's, in a commercial building as opposed to a residence. The difference between, uh, the gun shop or another commercial use and this use is, is they're not supposed to be actually selling it retail. It's supposed to be the specific patients cost only. So it's not the same. It would not be regulated under, um, development plan review.
But also, that was an as-of-right use for the, for the zone the gun shop is in. So, I'm, what I'm saying is, the way I look at zoning is, is not as a response to a one person or one group's particular request. It is what is best for, as a long-term land use decision. And if you're going to make the first person who, here's an example. You have an industrial zone and somebody wants to build a house in there. They want to buy one lot and build a house. You say, all right, you gotta bring us the plans, you gotta bring us the specs, we want to see the paint colors, we want to see that you're going to build this house nicely, and then we'll change the zoning. And they do that. You change the zoning from industrial to residential. The guy that buys the lot next door can just build a house next day. It doesn't matter. He doesn't have that burden to say, here's why I want to do this. And that goes the same for everything else. So for me, when you change zoning, it should be, it should be futuristic, future-looking, thinking forward to say, what are the land use objectives for a particular area and do we want these things, uh, there? Not just one particular isolated discreet application. And if that is the case, then I think if you want that burden to exist every time, you put a special use permit.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And it's, there's also a license and you can limit the number of licenses at any given time. We limit liquor licenses.
Yeah, I mean.
That's, actually, that's something you can't do.
Yeah, you can't do that.
You can't limit.
No, because they're given by the state. They're not given.
No, but what, what.
I'm talking about cooperative. If, if there was a cooperative that wanted to open in the town.
They'd have to get, they'd have to go to the state first. The license would be from the state. The only way the town could regulate that would be through zoning.
Right.
So we couldn't say, we, we, we issue 20 local, uh, co-op licenses and that's a.
Yeah, here's, here's the thing. Um, the state has actually a proposal to expand the amount of compassion centers. If that passed, the question would be for someone who would want to locate in, in the town of Tibbeton and get the state license, they would have to make a showing that it's permitted under the zoning ordinance. That's what they'd have to do. But that would be the only thing that the town could do. The town can't create its own compassion center license, just like the town can't issue any other license. That's all from the state.
I'm gonna let the speaker talk.
Hi, I'm Chi Lariano, 1765 Main Road in Tibbeton. And I attended the, um, planning board meeting the other night because I wanted to find out what this ordinance was all about. And there was not a lot of information given to the planning board members. The attorney answered a lot of the questions. And it was kind of, um, it's like this meeting. There's a lot of questions, there's no answers. And how can we have a zoning ordinance, you know, voted on tonight when there's so many questions? I have a, I asked about, um, I'm a Realtor and I've heard of instances in one house where the Realtors toured a, toured a house and there was one locked room in the house that they couldn't go into. And at the time, when it was being sold to someone, the room was unlocked and it was full of mold. It was a disaster because somebody had been growing marijuana in there. I heard of a, a person in Little Compton, and Tibbeton has the same where people rent out their homes for part of the year. And the person was from out of town and came back to find his house ruined. They had disconnected all of the fire alarms in the house. They had, the house was full of mold and he didn't know, you know, what he could do about it. So I said, well, as a, as a resident, don't you have authority, you know, would I have authority in, in my multifamily to say who I want living there? And as I understood the answer, I understood it was a HIPAA thing and you couldn't ask them if they had a, a card, if they wanted to, to rent. And, um, and I thought, that doesn't seem fair and that doesn't seem right. Uh, if you have a house, you can't, I can tell people they can't have a dog, but I can't control if they're gonna be, you know, growing marijuana in my property and causing me possible injury and, and additional cost. But, so I was quite, um, quite happy to find that in, um, the, um, chapter 21.28.6, the Edward Hawkins and Thomas Slater Medical Marijuana Act, that, it says here in 21-28.6-4, that provided however, due to safety and welfare concern of other tenants, the property and the public as a whole, a landlord may have the discretion not to lease or continue to lease to a cardholder who cultivates marijuana in the lease premises. Is that right?
Yes, it's correct.
Okay, that's good.
But does a person have to say that they have a card?
They, they can't.
Because if you're admitting you have a card, you're admitting you're having a medical.
You're not asking for the card. You can put it in the lease.
You can just say you can't grow marijuana here, period.
Yes, yes.
You don't have to get into any specifics.
Yes.
So you can see, there's a lot of things that haven't been answered. So how can you vote on this tonight? I, I was looking at the zoning, uh, that was authorized by the planning board and everything in personal residential marijuana cultivation is permitted by use. And I said, well, suppose I have a little cottage on a 1,300-square-foot lot in town and next door to me is somebody else that lives there as a cardholder and they have a small lot. I have children that play out in the yard and in the summertime, the windows are open and here comes the wafering of marijuana and I have to keep my kids inside.
You can't stop that.
But you can't stop people from smoking.
You can stop it by zoning.
You can't, you can't prevent people from smoking marrow, medical marijuana in their own residence.
From the Westerly ordinance that was posted on March the 16th, they're not having their public meeting until April 4th to give their people a little time to digest what's going on in their town. I think this is a rush. I think it's, it's a mistake and I think you should reconsider. Proposed ordinance would restrict patient grows to patient residents, but if a patient lives in a high-density zone, there will be, they will be prohibited from growing, not growing.
From growing, but not smoking or doing, well, first of all, they just don't smoke it, so they could be using pot or.
All right, from growing, okay. Uh, caregivers would be prohibited from growing in their residences, but they could buy or rent a site in a commercial or industrial zone. That's the zoning thing, right? So you're, you're, you're making, you're giving the caregiver, now, they wanna, they wanna grow for five and six people in the house.
Right.
That's a nightmare.
But that's not what this is.
Excuse me, that, under this proposed ordinance, caregivers would not be permitted to grow in any zone.
Well, that's good. Okay, I'm glad to see it's there. Renters must have notarized approval of landlords which meet, must be approved by the town, town authorities.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to talk to the solicitor down there about that one.
Well, you know what? The, there's, there's a lot of things here.
Yeah, but that's another propos, that's not.
This, no, this is a proposed ordinance. What I'm saying is, and what I, point I'm trying to make is, I think we need more questions, more answers. I have a lot of compassion for people who need medical marijuana. I really, really do. I also have a lot of compassion for people who don't need it, okay? And where they live and how they live and what is the neighborhood. I've seen too many documentaries where it's not working out too well in Colorado. The police, uh, the, uh, town of Portsmouth sent two of their policemen out to Colorado and that's the report they got back. You can watch it on Viceland. You can watch it all over. They're, 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 they're robbing each other. That's crime.
That's not what this is proposing.
I know, but what I'm saying is that I think we should have a moratorium on the, on the zoning ordinance here until we have more information.
Okay, if I may, just so long as you know right now.
Yeah.
It's currently unregulated.
Right.
See, no, no communities have any regulations on this. This is an attempt to start to regulate.
I know that, but why should, why do we have to be one of the first? Let's, let's see what some of the other communities.
Because right now, it's not being regulated. People can do whatever they want right now.
Well, if you put a moratorium on it or you put a special permit, it's, all of these Ps have an S in front of it until we have some zoning ordinance.
We do have zoning.
Well, that's what this is proposing.
Senator, Senator Pagliarino, meaning he's got a lot of, it's just.
All right, um, I think we're, yeah, I'm gonna have someone else speak, but I think we're getting your point. You want us to table this until we get more information.
I want, I want more thought to go into it, more questions to be answered. And there's a lot of information here that nobody's considering.
And that's, and I'll just say, that's part of what this exercise is for.
That's what I explained.
You know, i- it's the inevitable reaction when you float a draft of something that, you know, that's what happens. But this is what the public hearing process is for.
We took 10 months to figure out what the, the gas station was gonna look like and you want to do this in one or two nights?
I'm not saying I want to do this in one night. I'm saying this is the first night or the second night of what could be more nights, but this is where, this is the venue in which we do it.
Well, I'd like to see a committee formed. I'd like to see there be somebody from the public, at least one or two people from the public and a couple of, of, uh, people from the board and, and let's get an attorney and let's talk about it, like we did with the, with the turbine, uh, ordinance that, that was, uh, you know, being pushed. We, we need to get more information. Thank you.
I have a question, though. We can't stop people from, if they have a medical marijuana card and I think that that's what the misnomer is. They can use this medicine in their home if they have that card.
That's correct.
And they can grow it.
If they want.
Right, so.
Now, yes.
Well, if, well, even if a person has, if I'm a patient and I have this card and I can go get my medicine somewhere else, I can use it in my home legally.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I want to explain.
Yes, that's correct.
We are not putting restrictions on that.
Yeah, but I'm saying all the other stuff, the commercial, the cooperatives and the non-residential stuff and the compassion centers and things like that, not addressed in zoning, you can't, I mean, right? You, you couldn't come to the town and ask for a permit to open up a, a compassion center currently, right?
No. Basically, what, what, what has been happening now, and I see Mr. Hall is in the back, there's been requests for these types of, of grows and we, we've issued, uh, I've issued opinions and I think that's what the gentleman was referring to. I've issued opinions as to whether or not it's, it's a permitted use.
And that's, he just said we needed this ordinance.
Yeah, we've had to fit that in, but in my opinion, as your solicitor, you do need to have it specifically addressed in the zoning ordinance so that you can start regulating it in a, in a better fashion, however you decide to regulate it.
And this ordinance has been worked on for about six months, at least.
Oh, you've been working on this baby.
So it's not like we're, you know, just taking it right now, looking at it and gonna vote on it. We've been looking at this for a while.
That's correct, yes.
But I brought that up earlier because when you said the windows are open, you cannot stop that. If a medical marijuana.
You can, you can stop it by the, by the, um, fact that it's in a, in a very congested area.
Not if I'm a patient. No, you can't.
Well, you know what? They can, they can smoke, all right, they, but, so you have to take your kids inside a move, basically.
I mean.
Yeah, come on. I'm gonna let you just, because you have the basic knowledge, you might.
Two things, um, most.
Up to the mic, please. State your name.
State your name again.
Doran Lepinian again. Um, a couple of things. A patient is not allowed to smoke in certain places, not allowed to smoke outside. Um, I, I would also like to add that fewer and few patients are smoking these days. Um, smoking is not necessarily the best means of administration and part of the problem with smoking is that it really interferes with your privacy. If you're using medical cannabis, you probably don't want the world to know about it because inevitably, people will find out about it and they're gonna want some. So it, it best that you keep it to yourself and most people will go out of their way to prevent anyone from smelling smoke. Um, the other thing is, there is no, there's a specific provision in the statute. You cannot use it in a way that would affect the health or welfare of a child, for instance. So if smoke were going in a way that was affecting the child, that is not permissible. Usually, common sense prevails in any event and usually, people want to protect their own privacy. That's all I really want to say. Thank you, thank you.
If, just to, uh, put a point on that, 21-28.6-7, it, it, uh, gives us specific places you can't smoke marijuana. The two that are important here are in any public place and also where exposure to marijuana smoke significantly adversely affects the health, safety, uh, or welfare of children.
Right. I'm sorry, I think I said outside. I meant to say in public, actually, but that's outside. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you. I'm gonna limit.
Barbara Pelletier. Um, last week, and I picked up a flyer at one of the, one of those free things at the bank and I had been, actually read it about marijuana because I was, uh, going to speak to my mother's hospice nurse and she's 100 years old and in memory care and I thought maybe that would alleviate some of her anxieties. But in reading this, I was very surprised to see that actually, that a lot of the marijuana grown now is only, is not so much the happy-feeling kind as the very medically targeted for various conditions. And if, I'll give it to you and we can photocopy it, hand it out. But in any case, as I was listening here, would it not be better if we, and have a, a more handle on the whole situation, if we allowed in one place of, in town, like a communal marijuana plot where everybody can just get their own little space? That, wouldn't the police at least, the police be able to go to one spot? No, I'm, I'm not trying to be facetious or anything like that, but if you have it all in one spot, you would have a better.
I think we might have.
Handle on it. It, it would be more oversight, the whole thing.
Well, um, all right, thank you.
But, and the other thing I was, I, I thought was, because we have Brown University and all these research facilities, if we could actually work with somebody on that level, uh, that would be the ultimate oversight and we would be doing something innovative, that, uh, we could be a study group for how the town can handle it.
I, I think the chief wants to speak on this. He's in back if you're ready to go.
Come on, I was calling, I was trying to see my mother, Brian.
Maybe I will after this. Madam President, I, I'm listening and I don't know if we're touching, discussing two separate topics. The medical marijuana clearly has a purpose. Are we not discussing the agricultural part of this where we're growing it? We're making, the gentleman said they, you can't keep track of plants when strawberry plants multiply. How are we gonna keep track in a greenhouse when those plants are multiplying? That's my dilemma. But we're talking about two completely different subjects here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, any other members of the public? And I'm, I'm gonna say maybe 10 more minutes of public. State your name and address.
Peter Moniz, 83, Captain Circle. You got two versions of this tentative ordinance.
Peter Moniz, eighty-three Captain Circle. Um, you got two versions of this tentative ordinance before you. So I'd like to know which one you're gonna be working on, so I can suggest something here for a correction.
Well, I think we're looking at all of them.
We're looking at the planning one.
Yeah, we're looking at both.
So you're gonna incorporate the planning boards?
We don't know that yet.
Okay. Well, let me just state what I wanna bring out on the definitions, which are listed there. Uh, my concern is, um, I think we wanna keep this growth of marijuana within a building, I believe, generally.
They have to.
They have to, that's the law.
Well, no, it's not the law, not really. So I wanna change the definition a little bit, so I'm gonna be clear, clarify it. Non-resident cooperative cultivation means the use of a building or a portion thereof, and drop the use of land located in. To me, use of land means the land itself.
No.
No.
Say that again. So just, so just clarify, it states that it's a building only. So it's really clear in one's mind that the growth of marijuana will be within a building.
It has to be within a building. It has to stay law.
Wait a minute. What's a good point?
You just made a good point.
Okay, good. I'm glad you agree with me.
So we just gave it the, the word land, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, within a building.
And that goes for residential cooperative, too.
Yep.
Okay, if you drop the use of land, just say building.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's it, Peter? No, it's okay. Would anyone, would anyone else like to speak?
My name is Bob Taylor, and I live directly in back of St. Christopher's Church parking lot. There is a grow house directly in back of St. Christopher's Church that is legal, if you will. But I'm wondering if there's any way that regulations can be put in that such a thing would not happen in such a situation. They have Boy Scouts there, they have CCD there. There are, it's a church. Jay Lambert goes there periodically. I've seen him there. Um, it's a wrong place. It's-
To be clear, the church, not the grow house, right?
Truth to the truth. I, no, he goes to the church, yeah, right.
Yeah. Jay was, Jay was wondering where he wa, yeah.
The, the situation there is, the situation there is, there are so-called legal cardholders, if you will. But I'd like to know what a legal resident is. These people are from Florida that have rented this property, all right? And I have worked with the chief's detectives on it. They have raided the place. They fully agree it's a grow house. Their hands are tied, but there is a way, is there a way that it can be regulated that, so it's not right next to a church?
Well, that's what we're trying to do. That's what we're trying to do here.
Okay. My concern is this particular building is within eight feet of my house, you know? Um, Brett was talking about illegal electricity. You wouldn't believe the things that have gone on here. The town has, the building inspector has come down on it. They're kinda giving up. But there should be something that stops people from putting them next to a church, next to a school. The smell, it's not only smoking. I've walked damn near to where the priest lives, you wanna know where that is, and I can smell it over there on occasion. Right now, they're not growing at all, because everybody's against them.
Well, that's what this exercise is about, is because of the, the complaints that we were getting, and because we, us, the solicitor, what we should do, and he said we should have an ordinance. But this is, this, this is what this is all about, talking it out and deciding what the concerns of the public are.
Well, that's what I thought it was, but I'm, I'm trying to make a point that, you know, it is happening within, I'm gonna guess that building's thirty feet away from the church.
I know what building you're talking about.
You know exactly where it is, you know? Um, the smell is there when they were doing it. Something should be done about that type of situation. The electricity and all that stuff was just, you know, you get these, I have no qualms at all with medical people that need it. I have a niece that uses it for glaucoma. But the illegals that are so-called legal, that the police can't do nothing about, but a regulation could. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Rebecca Elwell, Tivede and Prevention Coalition. Um, I have more a question than a comment, or, or an answer, I suppose. Um, back in September, when the marijuana ordinance was first put on the agenda, I attended the meeting. Um, the ordinance was submitted, I believe, by, um, Mr. Pagliarino, and it was not really foc, what he submitted was not focused on medical marijuana at all, but it was growing, cultivation, acquisition, et cetera. Um, sort of in light of the fact that there may be a point where marijuana is legalized in Rhode Island. Um, and I remember feeling heartened at the time that the council seemed to really be in support of such an ordinance. Uh, and I, my, I, here's my question. My question is, where is that at this point, where we're now talking about zoning around medical marijuana? Has that been sort of taken off the table? And is there a reason why the focus has sort of switched?
That, that, um, that ordinance encompassed medical marijuana.
Okay, so, so what I'm looking at doesn't.
They were growing for medical purposes.
Okay.
There's really no distinction. I mean, it's medical marijuana, and that's what's permitted.
Okay.
But I didn't think in that ordinance that was submitted way back in September that there was a distinction at all. He was more focused on, on, on the large grow operation, which is addressed in this ordinance. This ordinance goes beyond what he proposed.
Beyond, okay, that's, I think that's, that answers my question.
Yes.
Can I ask you one question before you walk away, please? Did you state that, uh, by, by, uh, in the legislation, that if you were doing this growing, you had to have a, a letter from an electrician?
Did I state that? I haven't stated anything.
It's a different person. It's an affidavit.
For a residential grow operation. Co-op.
Co-op.
Co-op. I'm just, so that there'd be no contact with the building inspectors often?
Only for the non-residential, it would seem.
I'm sorry, for the residential cooperative?
No, I'm sorry. Joe asked, there would be no contact with the building inspector, and I answered, as I understood it, was for the non-residential only.
Yeah.
And for the residential, it required an affidavit from an electrician, saying that the electrical components were up to snuff.
But that would, that would only go to the state police, for the application is what I answered, yeah. Is that, do you understand, I don't know if you're familiar with this that much, did that sound like an accurate statement?
That, that's in the state law.
So the house that was mentioned, was that done? I mean, and there's no town intervention?
No, there, there was some town intervention there, because-
Later, but I'm saying prior to the setup.
Yeah, what, what was propo, what, what was being, um, set up there was actually a very large grow operation.
My only point is, do we need to, like, have some notes taken here, 'cause we might want some changes to legislation upstate, where the town, at least if an electrical, I mean, it would seem to me, if you're gonna have to do that much work, you need an electrical permit to alter your electrical service, to do that.
I know.
Quickly about that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, Peter, not, not yet. Are you done, Rebecca?
Well, I was, because Joe brought that point up, that point has been much discussed among, um, folks in the, in the prevention arena, in the terms that, if I wanted to put a hot tub in my basement, and I needed extra, different kind of wiring, different kind of plumbing, I would have to get-
Sit down, please. Thank you.
I would have to get a building permit. If I wanna change a window to my basement, I have to get a building permit. So there's somewhat of an argument that if you are going to rewire and replumb and-
If you do.
If you do, create new drainage, um, ventilation, et cetera. If you're doing any of those for any purpose, then you would need a building, um, a building permit.
Well, I'm just assuming you're not running it off of one plug and an extension cord if you're growing twelve plants. And that, that's my only point is, I mean, maybe we should be making some notes for our legislators to, uh, you know, consider in this, I mean, if there are flaws, I mean, you know, far be it from me to believe that we can get a piece of legislation that's, you know, flawless, but, uh-
All right. All right.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm just taking notes as I go along.
Talk into your microphone, because poor Nancy is trying to-
It seems like there's conflicts in this law with, you know, even state, you know, state, uh, building codes.
All right, I'm gonna, anyone else from the public right now? Anyone else from the public? I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'm gonna ask for a short discussion from the council right now. Does anyone have anything to add or say at this point?
Well, only that I'm, I'm probably more confused now than when we started, and I'm really not ready to vote on this. And I'd like to hear if, uh, the people that were proposing the co-op could actually come forward with some sort of proposal, and give them a chance to have some input on the ordinance before we were to vote on it.
Well, I think it, as a council, we have to decide if we want co-ops also, and that's what this zoning ordinance addressed. Dave, do you have anything?
Yeah, um, I originated this back in September, after I received some information from Mr. Pagliarino in attending the school departments. Um, I think the survey was done, correct me if I'm wrong, the marijuana use went down again this year at the high schools, and I'm totally for no marijuana in, in this town at all. Um, I do have the compassion, um, people with cards who wanna grow for themselves, that's fine. Other than that, um, it all starts with marijuana. I'm sorry. Um, that's just my opinion.
Peter, do you have anything to add?
I just think that, um, regulations need it only 'cause of abuse. 'Cause I know there's a place in Seconk, 'cause I did a little bit of research. You don't need any medical, you don't need any medical. You just go in there, give them three hundred dollars, two hours later, you get your card, without any documentation of any need for the marijuana, medical marijuana. So you can have your card.
Yeah, but that's-
You grow, no, it's for Rhode Island.
Oh, it's for Rhode Island.
You go get your card, you, you can grow, have twenty-four plants, and then with that card, you can have two people, and then two people in each house, you can have a hundred forty-four plants of marijuana in your house at any one time under this law. So this regulation of permitting only personal residential marijuana to their own use will control versus a hundred forty-four, which also will protect the town, I believe, against the regulation of the electrical problems that would need if all of those plants are grown in a property, where only an affidavit's needed versus zoning. So if we got to do this, I'm agreeing with, with Dave, that we would do a personal residential marijuana cultivation only.
That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah. I, I, I think I agree with Peter and with Dave. Uh, my situation, perhaps, I assume, is somewhat unique, in that, as some of you know, my wife did a residency in oncology, a residency in radiation oncology, and a fellowship in pediatric oncology. Uh, so I am absolutely assured, uh, that marijuana does work. I can't say that from personal experience, thank God, but my wife assures me that it does work. Uh, and she also assures me, at least when we were in Philadelphia, I'd point out to her, gee, isn't this illegal? And her answer usually was something like, well, half the patients in my waiting room are on marijuana. Uh, I assume it's also readily available here. But to the extent we're gonna make it legal and something that you could actually have out in the open, I tend to agree with Peter and Dave, perhaps with a somewhat of a twist. I believe in the personal cultivation. I think that should be clearly permitted. But I also believe that there should be guardian cultivation as well. At least at this point, I'm comfortable with that position. I may not be comfortable with some of the other issues that have been raised, and perhaps that does require some additional consideration.
It, it would be the caregiver.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, and I do agree that, um, the person I agree with, but I, but you know, as Brett has brought up, there are patients that can't leave their bed, and do have caregivers, and I do believe that we should allow them to grow for the patient.
So then my question, and again, a caregiver, you're gonna have one person, so you're gonna limit, so you're only gonna have one person with the card in the, in each household, or two?
The patient is allowed to, to, to a point.
Well, you need the caregiver card, so that automatically makes it, so it doubles the plants.
Yes.
But I'm trying to say to you, but each house can have two caregivers, correct? 'Cause that's how that's-
You can have more than that.
Yes.
So you're gonna have two caregivers.
No.
No.
That would be, that'd be a cooperative grow.
So you're gonna have two good, two people with the cards in their house, and then underneath each one can have two caregivers, correct?
If you have more than one caregiver in any one building, that turns it into a cooperative grow.
So the caregiver can grow it in their own home?
It can only be one caregiver.
So one caregiver per household.
Correct.
One person growing.
With two people underneath it. They can get two underneath, right? 'Cause that's the law, right?
Well, if you have a caregiver in a, in a residence there, I guess it, that has his own card, or her own card.
So one person can have two people underneath them, growing for two people, correct?
Uh, no, I don't think the caregiver is limited to, uh, just a, a number of patients.
I thought they were. I thought they were limited to two.
Caregiver is limited to five patients, right?
Five.
But, am I, am I correct that the amount of cultivation that even a caretaker can give, the amount of cultivation for a caretaker would be limited by the number of patients that they had?
No.
If they were, they're not limited?
They're limited by the number of plants.
Well, can we limit it by the number of patients through this proposed ordinance?
No.
No.
Okay, so that's already, so that's already covered under state law.
That's correct.
But it would be limited by, you know, sort of de facto, by the fact that they can only accumulate five patient licenses, for lack of a better term, or cards, right?
Yeah, but you're talking-
If, if you're a caregiver, and you've got five, um, patients that have assigned you as their caregiver, you are, are you not sort of attributed their, their... I'm such an idiot in this. I, I don't even know the terminology.
You're not, you're not limited, you're not limited by what you can grow by the amount of patients you have. You have the caregiver license. It just limits the amount of plants that you have.
To what?
To twenty-four. Twenty-four apiece, for each person you're, all right. That's the question Peter is saying. Peter is saying you could have a hundred and some.
Is it per person?
Just come to the microphone, so we can get you on the record, ma'am, please. Thanks.
Yeah, she's coming.
I know, I'm just-
Peter was saying that they could grow a hundred and twenty plants. That's not true.
No, I told you this was confusing. Yes. Okay, here's how it goes. If I'm a caregiver for one patient, I can grow twelve mature plants. I can have twelve immature babies for them. If I take on another patient, this makes no sense, so please don't ask me to explain the rationale behind it, drafting. Um, if I take on a second patient, my plant count is twenty-four mature, twelve immature, which makes no sense, 'cause people say, how do you get twenty-four from twelve, which is, you know? Now, if I wanna go ahead and take more patients, I don't get any more plants.
You're limited to twenty-four.
I'm, twenty-four and twelve, that is my limit, even if I have five patients.
So it's a total of six.
So I, the, it stops at two patients.
Thirty-six.
But you also have to keep in mind, some people are patients as well as caregivers.
That's what I mean. So if you're your own patient, you can also have a caregiver, so then you would have-
Well, I can be a patient, many patients, as you heard from one.
Then you can have twelve yourself, or max twenty-four.
Right, technically, and this makes no sense, and I don't think anyone actually does this, 'cause it makes no sense. I can have twelve for me. If I were just a patient, I could have twelve and twelve. But here's the thing. A cardholder cannot have more than twelve seedlings. So I could have, if I had five patients, or two patients, I could have twenty-four plants for them, twelve for me, but only twelve seedlings, total. So then you say, okay, you can have thirty-six mature, but you can only have twelve seedlings. So it makes no sense. So how, how do you do that? Very few people have been able to pull that off, I might say, so. Too many people. Well, it's a question of how do you get thirty-six if you only have twelve?
So what is the maximum amount of plants that somebody can have?
The maximum-
No matter how many patients they have.
The maximum amount of plants being grown anywhere would be a non-residential co-op, which is forty-eight and twenty-four.
But if you're a caregiver and a patient, you would have thirty-six and twelve.
Theoretically, I mean, that is true, according to law, but in practical reality, it's hard to pull off.
You wouldn't have thirty-six, because- You wouldn't have 36 because you only...
Because I have to get that out of 12.
Right.
Right. So...
I get, that makes me feel better about the caregiver now.
My question then is how much, how many ounces does a plant grow?
You know, that is an excellent and confusing question, because I can show you plants that produce nothing, I can show you plants that produce many ounces. Most people who are growing in their homes are not growing large plants, they're growing small plants. Also, keep in mind that the amount that you can have, I mean, you use it once it dri, once it's dried, so you harvest it and you dry it, cure it, it's, two and a half ounces is all you can have if you're a patient. So if you're growing huge plants, you could be over your limit, so it doesn't really suit your purpose to grow them that big. Now, one thing that we didn't talk about, which is happening more and more, which is really creating even more confusion, is that, because, I'm sorry, and I know it's getting late, but can you bear with me for a second?
Yep, go ahead.
You may be hearing about some grows that seem like commercial grows, because you've heard tonight that the caregivers don't charge the patients, you can only pass along your costs, it's not a profit-making thing, but there's an exception to that. And the exception is people who are growing for the compassion centers. So I can be a caregiver, a patient, and I can sell my excess to a compassion center. Now, that, those grows have, you know, some people have gotten concerned about, because they're more likely to be growing larger plants, of course, and they're more likely to be in a non-residential setting, I don't know anyone who's in a residential setting who's doing that. Because when the compassion centers first opened, when Governor Chafee was governor, if you may recall, he wasn't letting them open at all, he wouldn't give out the licenses. So what the legislature did was they went and they amended the original legislation for compassion centers and limited how many plants they could grow. So they could only grow 100 plants. So then they said, okay, if you go buy it, go buy excess from patients and caregivers. So what, now that law has since changed, again, but what happened as a result of that, compassion centers were asking people to grow for them, otherwise they weren't going to be able to service any patients. So then we had this whole other group who are selling to the compassion centers. Now, for them, that's commercial, they are filing tax returns, they are still limited to the same amount of plants, but now they're more likely to go rent a space, grow them larger, so they can sell. They're filing tax returns, they get 1099s and all that, but they have to do it from the plant count that they have for patients. And, you know, it's, so that, you may have heard about those, which is very different from people who are just growing for themselves or for a few patients.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, very much.
Thank you. Joan, I'm going to have to speak if you'd like.
I think from my perspective, I've learned a lot tonight. I think I need some more education on this topic. I would not be prepared to move forward with any type of ordinance at this point. I think it needs a little bit more research to get to something that is probably agreeable to a lot of people. But at this point, I've learned so much that I was not aware of tonight and I'm sure that there's probably a lot more that I don't know. But I now know what questions to ask, so that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Brett?
Sure. Thank you, everybody, for participating. The, the topics that I flagged, or the issues that I flagged, revolve around, I think we all agree that personal residential marijuana cultivation is illogical as of right use in the districts that we're talking about. I am also concerned, and I agree with Joan, I, I think tonight is the first step, or the today step in a, in a number of steps that we take, because I've got more to learn about this and I want to know more about the law and I will do my best to learn as much as I can. But the, the caregiver component is, is really, I think, very important, because if we, if we, if we look at this past the sort of face value of it being a land use decision and a zoning decision, the reason we're talking about this is because there is a need in the community and the medical community has opined that, that, that this is medicine for specific groups of diseases it treats, specific ailments, specific conditions, whatever the medical terminology is, it helps those people. And it helps some, some really, really ill people. And I think as soon as you acknowledge that that is the case, you have to, have to understand, and I, this is what caused me to ask the question, that the people who are most at risk or most really affected and can be helped by this medicine really need that extra step, and those caregivers are that, that extra step. Those people, those people aren't going to grow or can't grow or can't, if you've ever gone into the hydroponics stores, that some of the equipment is extraordinarily expensive and it's lugging soilless mix and there are filters and there's lights and chemicals and all kinds of things that, I mean, to expect some people to, to have to do that is really unreasonable, I think. The other, the other thing, so we, I think we have to figure out a way to make that work. The other thing are the, the co-ops and because we live, this is Tiverton in our land use map, and what is reality are two totally different things. We've got a lot of commercial uses in residential areas and we've got residential uses in commercial areas, and it, and it isn't as simple as drawing a line, non-residential versus residential, because, because we're going to have those districts that, that just are kind of a mess. And so that, that triggered a little bell in my head that it seems like the non-residential have a built-in safeguard or at least a process. There's a trigger for zoning and building inspections. And I think if we learn enough about that and we're comfortable enough with that system, that that should, that should be, that should alleviate some of the concerns we have about overextending electrical service and siting and things like that. The residential side, it's a little harder, I think, because I'm not sure, I'll have to look into it more, but the licensed electrician affidavit doesn't seem nearly like enough safeguard to, to life and, and property to just have somebody say, yeah, your electrical service is fine. The first house that burns down and the electrician goes, well, it was fine when I looked at it, you know, I, we're going to have, it's going to be a little bit harder to do that. But I'm getting to a point where I think that the special use permit in those instances might be something we could talk about. The only question I have is, we don't have any guidelines or any other regulation or anything after that, the next step. What are, what are the thresholds, what are the guidelines, what are the siting guidelines, where do we want these? What are the, and I mean, we have that problem with every special use permit we have in this town, is what, what's the threshold, what's the bar that you must meet that you, that you get a special use permit? Because we've had special use permits denied for things you think, boy, that should have been a no-brainer, and we've had them approved for things that you think, how in the heck did that happen? So that's what I worry about and I think that's what we need to know from legal counsel, from the town administrator, from planning, is do we have, or zoning, rather, do we have a mechanism that we can set up some kind of guideline? Because I also don't like the idea of creating this new potentially legal thing and then saying zoning board of review and planning board, it's, you figure it out. We've just made it a special use permit, you figure out how to set the bar, you figure out where, what criteria you're going to look for and how you're going to differentiate between applicant A and applicant B if they're, you know... Because the first time we, we deny a special use permit on, you know, little or no legal standing, we're going to have a lawsuit. And that's, you know, we should have some kind of guideline. So I think that's part of the conversation we have if we're going to go down that road.
So at this point, do I have a motion?
Just one more question about special use permit. I thought you had to show hardship via, couldn't do it somewhere else.
That's a variance.
That's a variance, yeah.
Thought it was, what's, then what is the criteria to, for...
It's not, it's, it's getting a vote of the appellate board or whoever the approval board is.
Well, well, this is part of the problem why I'm not ready to vote tonight.
Yeah.
I mean, even then, I couldn't remember straight what the criteria was for special use.
Yeah, I mean, that's the problem, that's the one we've always had, is you make something a special use permit and then it's subject to whatever body you're in front of, whether it be the planning board or the zoning board or whoever. In, in, in some towns, I, I've been in some towns where the special use permits are granted by the town council, which it's, you know, we think that's a kind of a strange thing to do, but...
Please, whatever it is. What would we like to do, do I have a motion?
Motion to...
To table or to...
Continue.
To continue.
Well, I'll make a motion to continue it, but I hear my fellow councilors saying that they have questions that they want answered and asked. Who's going to ask, I mean, who's going to answer your questions? Who would you like to answer your questions? What questions do you have?
It's kind of my question, if we continue this...
It's okay to move this forward, but...
I'd like to, I'd like the public to have more input and I ask them if they would like to come forward with some suggestions, you know, and that's...
But like...
I'm assuming it's going to be some more public input, that was the reason I would like to keep the meeting open.
Well, we have, we had the public, we've had this advertised, um...
We hadn't challenged them.
I'm kind of thinking the same way that Dave does, what is our next step?
What's our next step? Continue it for what? Not that I don't want to continue, I do, but for what?
I certainly can do my own research.
Are you going to do your own personal research? Okay, that's what he's asking.
Of course, I wish you would.
Okay. All right, so we'll...
Well, could I have a, could I ask a question of a town solicitor? I think we're in agreement on some things. I think we've accepted the reality that for some people, medical marijuana is totally appropriate. That means somebody has to cultivate it. So what we're looking for are some rules that might apply here in Tiverton for cultivation. I think as a second step, I thought there, there seems to be a consensus that people should have a, should have a right to personal cultivation. I hope I'm not speaking for anybody, but that seems to be appropriate, even though we might perhaps want limits on, on what people can grow. And secondly, that guardians or caretakers would also have some rights in an appropriate situation. We can agree on that. Can we take baby steps? Because it, it seems to me that the proposals that we have here seem rather draconian. Draconian in this sense, that does anybody have any doubt at all that if we wanted to get marijuana, we could go find it on some corner in, in some one of the cities across the state line?
Find it in your own town.
I mean, it isn't, it isn't as though it isn't readily available. So I think that the, the, our ultimate proposal should be something that recognizes what the realities are out there in the real world. And that is, just as my wife could tell me, half the people in my waiting room are on marijuana, despite the fact it's illegal in Philadelphia. We know that if it's illegal here in Rhode Island, if it's illegal here in Tiverton, let less, you can go to Fall River, you can go to Bedford, you can go to Brockton, you can go to Providence, you're going to get it on some street corner. So the only thought I had is that, could we begin working on, on, on some of these issues that there seems to be some consensus on and slow but sure give us an opportunity to address some of the other issues, like the cooperative, for example? I, I have a, I have some concerns about that concept, but it seems to me we can start with some baby steps.
You have, you have the framework in front of you and, and that's the use table and I ask, I think that what needs to be done between this and the next council meeting is to review what you think is appropriate for cultivation, where you think it's appropriate in the town and who should be doing it. And once you make those predicate determinations, then you can start fitting it into the use table, because ultimately to me, if there is to be regulation in the town of this use, it's going to come in the zoning ordinance, it's going to come from the use table. So I think that provides you with a good framework to take a look at.
It might also put out a message to people who are advocates for this, to give us the information, for example, on the cooperative. What exactly do you mean by a cooperative? How does it work? Give me some of the specifics, how much can you grow and what are you doing with the excess? Are we turning whole areas of town into, into this, into these cooperatives? I, I'd like to get some of the specifics and be able to address perhaps even one or two items over the next two or three months and make sure we get it right.
Okay, do I have a motion? I, I think I'm going to put this to bed here.
I'll make a motion to...
Table it.
Table it to the next meeting?
April 11. Continue it to April 11.
Continue it to April 11th meeting, I'm sorry.
Motion made in second, all those in favor? Unanimous.
And it's, Tony, it's Rhode Island, General Walk 2128.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, the next, CDBG 2006 grant application, first public hearing. Thanks for waiting. I'm going to step out for a minute, so Charles is going to...
Hi, councilors, I'm Christian Belden with Church Community Housing Corporation. As we've done for the last 30 years, we're here to assist the town with...
Can you, hold on.
I'm here to assist the town with the development of its application. We help the town do this as well as administer the program in general. This is the first of two public hearings required for, by the Community Development Block Grant Program. The purpose of this hearing is to notify the residents, the town, of the town's intention to apply for these funds and to solicit their input. These, these funds are to benefit low and moderate income people primarily in three ways, through improved housing opportunities, provisions of employment, and provision of community facilities and services. All of those ways need to benefit low and moderate income people. There is $4,725,348 available statewide this year. This is a competitive application and the town can apply for up to $250,000 maximum. We have received so far a few letters of interest from various organizations that wish to submit a request to be included in the town's application this year. The Boys and Girls Club has submitted two letters, they'd like to be included first for a capital needs request and also for their summer programming, summer camp and summer learning initiative programs. We've received a letter of interest from the Women's Resource Center that would like to request funds to be used to continue to provide their domestic violence services such as financial literacy and other direct services, as well as refurbishing their main office on Toro Street in Newport to replace wooden windows and storm windows. And then Church Community Housing is also requesting approximately $20,000 for housing operating costs, $120,000 to install a photovoltaic array at Apple Creek Apartments on Woodwood Drive in Tiverton. And then additional funding for housing rehabilitation, housing development, and those two are amounts to be determined. There are some, some individuals representing other agencies who are here that may wish to speak and I can answer any questions that you might have at this time. Again, there will be a second public hearing, at which point we'll have solicited all of the requests from, that the town has, as well as any that we receive from other agencies or individuals, and we'll present those to you at that time.
Any questions from the council?
If I could, please, ma'am, president.
Joe?
A, improved housing opportunities for low and moderate income families and individuals. Can you explain exactly what we're talking about with those dollars?
Sure, it, it can be a number of different activities, one of which is new housing development... It can be a number of different activities, one of which is new housing development. So the development of affordable housing, it would be in addition to any existing, and then also housing rehabilitation. So if you have, like Church Community Housing operates a home improvement loan program that was originally funded years ago with CDBG funds. And so the idea is that we got a pool of capital together, which we have made loans to low and moderate income persons to replace roofs or boilers or rectify code issues. And we loaned them those funds at either 3% interest or 0% interest if they're elderly or disabled. So it's a means of maintaining a high quality housing stock in your community. So those are two examples of how the program goes to.
Just to tell you where.
Improve housing opportunities.
I have, for years, I've watched these grants go forward and I've watched these proposals and I haven't seen a lot happen. Now, for instance, in Providence, they've used their block grants to buy up entire blocks of housing, remodel it, and then put it back out for exactly what you're talking about, affordable housing. They took existing housing stock. And it seems like every time I see something in this town, we want to build something new or, I don't know. I just want to make sure that somehow we funnel this money into existing properties to bring up, particularly in the north end with some of the triple deckers out there. I mean, I'd love to see one of those triple deckers like they did in Providence. Buy the triple deckers and remodel them, put them on and bring them up to code, then, you know, have that housing stock repurposed rather than try to build new. That's just something I think needs to be priority in our grant request is rehabilitation of existing buildings.
Yeah, I mean, one of the activities that I just mentioned that we're requesting is to make improvements to Windwood Apartments, which is a 28-unit existing facility here in Tiverton. So we, you know, when it makes sense, we submit those applications to do exactly that.
Yeah, yeah, I think there's been some septic issues out there too. The only other thing, the Boys and Girls Club, I mean, I know it's a good organization, but they do basically cater to Newport. I don't know that there's a lot of Tiverton kids going out there. Weren't there any, I mean, are there programs similar, you know, programs like this locally that our kids are participating in it, we should be more focusing on?
You might be surprised, actually. I know that these types of questions have been posed in the past and we've had the organization to actually submit the data that shows where their kids are coming from. I know the Boys and Girls Club, for example, runs a summer camp at Sandy Woods Farm in Tiverton every summer, and a lot of Tiverton kids are enrolled in that, get scholarships from the Boys and Girls Club. So if you'd like, I could put that question to them to provide that data to see how many Tiverton kids are benefiting from their organization.
That's the first I've heard about the summer camp at Sandy Woods. That would be local.
It's been ongoing for several years now.
Two years now, three, four years.
So would they be entitled to the CBGB grant from Middletown, Newport, and Portsmouth also?
They would, yes, because, and in fact, many regional activities that provide services throughout a county or throughout a specific area can apply, you know, and they usually do a prorated amount based on the number of people that they're serving in that particular community.
So have you been to Portsmouth yet or Middletown or Newport?
Yeah, we were just in Portsmouth earlier tonight.
Have they contributed to the Boys and Girls Club of Newport?
I believe they are also requesting funds through Portsmouth, yeah.
Okay. So there is some benefit there.
You have to have multiple hearings.
Yeah, well, yeah, but getting them from multiple towns also.
Right.
No, I, no, I just thought, I didn't even know that.
The town has to choose to include them in the application, but the Boys and Girls Club is requesting to be included in Portsmouth's application as well.
I'd like to see those numbers also.
Any other questions?
I would like some more information about rehabilitation of home improvement loans, whether they're available for individual homes, just for big developments. So if there's elderly around here that.
Yeah, absolutely. We, certainly, I mean, we have a specific page on our website that talks about all the eligibility requirements, but I can absolutely email you that information as well.
Any other questions from the council? At this point, I'd like to open it up to the public. Any participation from the public?
Good evening, Councilor Susan Skanki, East Bay Community Action Program. Just wanted to request that we, we are tentatively wanted to come before you to request that we could be included in your 2016 Community Development Block Grant Application. We would probably do similar to what the Boys and Girls Club is doing, which is ask for funding across all six cities and towns of Newport County for two projects, one which we came to you with last year, which was not funded, and that's our East Bay Skills Alliance Job Training Program. We train, we would be asking for funding across the six cities and towns to train approximately 15 individuals. This has been a successful training program for us, 15 individuals. We give them the technical skills training in becoming a certified nursing assistant, and then the job placement rate has been very, very high because there is a need primarily, we have found, in the long-term facilities. And we have served Tiverton residents with this program. The second thing that has happened with East Bay Community Action Program recently is we have merged with the East Bay Center, which is, provides behavioral health services. So we have now integrated primary health care, behavioral health care, dental care, and social services at EBCAP. And we are wanting to increase the number of behavioral health staff that we have at our health center at 6 JP Boulevard in Newport. We also do serve many Tiverton residents at our health facility in Newport as well. So we were tentatively thinking of two projects that we would like to bring before you for Community Development Block Grant funding this year.
Thank you. Any questions for Susan?
No, we recognize you.
Anyone else from the public?
Madam President, council members, I'm Laurie De Persio from the Women's Resource Center, and we would like to thank you for your past contributions to our agency. We have submitted a letter of intent and hope that you'll consider us again moving forward to 2016. I'm just going to ask if there are any questions because I know it's late. I know you want to go home soon.
No chance of that.
No.
Any questions from the council?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public? I'd like to close the public hearing. This is the first hearing that we will be putting in on the next. No action is needed right now.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for waiting. Appointment to resignations, Recreation Committee, four vacancies, three-year term. We have two applicants. At our last meeting, we waived our rule to not appoint because we have so many vacancies and we're trying to fill them. I don't know if you'd like to make a motion.
I'll make that motion again that we waive our rule and appoint tonight.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All those in favor? The first one is Joseph C. Perry, Jr., 133 Eastbourne Avenue. I do know that Mr. Perry's in, he's away and unable to attend the meeting. I'm very familiar with Joe's, with Joe and his contribution to the youth in town, so I have no problem.
I'll make a motion to appoint Joseph C. Perry, Jr., two- or three-year term on the Recreation Commission.
Second.
I have a motion in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
He's not related to me.
No, he's not. Edward J. Savini. 168 Merritt Avenue, is Mr. Savini here? Come on up. Welcome. Yes, please. Welcome and thank you for volunteering. We need more of you.
You're quite welcome.
Just give us a little history about yourself and why you would like to be part of the Recreation Commission.
Well, it was Mr. Perry who got me volunteered with the, I believe it was the seven to nine year olds in the town that I coached. I want to keep saying little league, but I guess T-ball. And it's, it's a good thing, but it's sad when I see these kids graduate college already. And one of them is a lieutenant on the, turn up for the police department, Lieutenant Cars, they're his two boys. Right now, I'm employed by FPS, which is a federal protection service by the federal government, Department of Homeland Security. I know David as far as visiting Dunkin' Donuts, but unfortunately, I've never, I don't know anyone else other than Chief Blakey that I've recognized here in the town, and shame on me, I've been a town resident for 16 years and I love kids. In fact, it was the chief's department that holds the Tiverton Citizens Police Academy, which I think is tremendous. Everyone should, should go through that. But I also volunteered on the advocate for day one through that, through the, and it's very rewarding. But, you know, as, the thing I like about with kids is just to see them smile. That's just me. I grew up from a big family from Warren. In fact, when we played Warren football, we played Tiverton on Thanksgiving Day. So here I am rooting for Tiverton now, so. Warren, the Warren Football League doesn't exist anymore, so we're not going to beach anymore. What else would coach a Bruiser? But it's, we kid around and Joe, I've known Joe almost the 16 years and he's a great, he's a great guy. So other than that, if you want to ask any questions, fire away, but I'm the only guy in Tiverton that cuts a swimming pool.
Any questions for Mr. Savigny?
I'll make a motion to appoint Edward J. Savigny to the Recreation Commission for a three-year term.
Second.
I have a motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want me a coffee? I shouldn't say that. Under 25 bucks.
Get that off the table.
I'll buy you a coffee.
Unfinished business, Town Administrator, request approval for resolution to establish OPEB trust account with interlocal trust continued from March 14. Are there any further questions from the council since last week? Has everyone had a chance to review it? Any questions for the treasurer?
You speak to me, Denise. I just have a question. Do you have returns on their investments? I know in the front of the drawing, there was a one about another investment, I guess Biden, they lost money. So where's the return? If you go into this one, how is the return doing versus?
The state pension fund that was.
You're referring to the state pension fund and what?
But they lost money, so where is this one? 15 mil or something.
To be perfectly honest with you, I don't know how this compares to the state pension fund.
They have three funds.
I mean, this, this has three funds, you can choose which direction or approach you want to. I don't. At this point, no.
I had to ask for a prospectus.
Did you get it?
No, I did not, but.
Okay.
That's okay.
Did you ask Ian?
I did.
The gentleman that was here?
Yes. So maybe just poke him again and just send it to the council. I mean, it was, it was, it was the end of year 15. No, it wasn't, it was June 15. I wanted an end of year and a year to date if we could get it, but end of year was fine. The returns were, I mean, they're indexed funds, they're not lackluster, not spectacular. I'd say probably average seven to 12% a year on a good year and then sub seven on down years. We're probably in a down year right now. It's probably, I don't know, five or six. It doesn't move a lot. I noticed the deltas between the three funds weren't substantial, they were pretty mild. The best years were 12 or 13, the worst years were, there were some negatives, but that was a 10-year spread.
Madam President, if I could, I know we should never take things for granted comparing these incredibly different funds. The OPEB Trust Fund is, will be a Vanguard managed, no load, low load fund, and it will not be allocated anywhere near like the state pension plan. And some of the criticism that's been levied against the state plan would be that it's overemphasized hedge funds and other speculative or reverse market conditions in order to raise any money, and they've probably not really recognized any real economic gains in four or five years. This, this fund is set aside for a completely different purpose. It's not to pay people pension benefits, it's to assist the cities and towns in liquidating their long-term obligations for other post-employment benefits, so health insurance being one of those. And it's not like the town doesn't pay it already. So the town is paying roughly $800,000 a year for post-employment benefits. And we've been talking to the trust about different strategies for.
Couple of years.
Even for a couple of years now, even using the OPEB trust as the conduit for the pay-as-you-go payments so that we'd at least get some of the float when we invest that first day of the fiscal year and to gradually build the fund up. Because we have two unions that do contribute to OPEB right now, police and fire. So what we're looking for is to create this mechanism going forward so that when we do get to the point, and I hope we do, where one-time gains of the town can be allocated to our capital needs and our long-term debt needs, that this would be one of the items on the list and you could eventually get to the point where that $800,000 does not have to be part of the town's operating budget. The ultimate definition of victory here would be to fully fund your OPEB account so that it's self-sustaining or very nearly self-sustaining, and that $800,000 comes back into the operating budget over tax relief, depending on your point of view or how the budget's going that year. But until we, it's a long way off, but you don't get there if you don't get started. And that was the point. We have no, this is a very important point, no mandatory annual required contribution. You're not tying the hands of the town if you agree to participate in this trust fund. You could put a dollar in, you could put $100,000 in. The point would be something is better than nothing.
Right, and the whole point is we have to start somewhere. We have to establish a trust. And for a town our size, it's kind of challenging and it could be expensive to do it ourselves, which was why the trust developed this product. And it was probably about two years ago, they started polling the towns, would you be interested if we did this? Because every town was in the same boat as we are. And we just have been working towards, you know, getting in line with the trust, adopting the resolution so that we can start, I mean, we withhold the money now and it's in a general, it's in a general fund investment. It needs to be moved to a trust. I mean, Portsmouth had established their own trust and they found that it was so expensive to maintain based on the low level of assets that they had, and they have significantly.